Salem Budget Committee for December 10th, 2018. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and welcome to everybody who's here tonight. Staff, city budget committee members, councilors. The next item on our agenda is public testimony. Oh, you do need to call roll. I'm ready to go.
Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Member Kesar? Absent. Member Anderson?
Present.
Member Nanki?
Here.
Member McCooy?
Here.
Member Osik?
Here.
Member Hoy?
Here.
Member Cook?
She is here.
She's here somewhere.
Here.
Member Lewis?
Here.
Member Nordike?
Here.
Member Tigan?
Here.
Member Mingo?
Here.
Member Moore Green?
Here.
Member Barker?
Here.
Member Haslett? Absent. Member Sund?
Here.
And member Milton? Absent.
Thank you. So we have public testimony tonight. This is for the Budget Committee, and it's an opportunity for the public to comment on our meeting this evening. Is there anybody here who did not sign up that would like to speak? No? Okay. I'd like to move then to item number three on our agenda, and that's the minutes from the May 9th, 2018 City of Salem and Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 9th, 2018 meeting?
So moved.
I was gonna do a one and a two on that. Okay. So councillor Anderson first, and second member Hoy. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the May 9th Budget Committee meeting minutes as approved?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now to item number four on our agenda, and that's the election of officers. And I just would like to take a quick moment to thank you for allowing me to serve as the Chair this past year. It's been a delight and an honor. And at this time, I will open up the floor for nominations.
I nominate councillor Sally Cook.
Second.
All those in favor of councillor Cook for Chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I would like, nominations are now in order for the Office of Vice Chair. Are there any nominations? Councillor Anderson?
I nominate Board Member Vanessa Nordike.
Great, thank you.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay. All those in favor of member Nordike for Vice Chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Wonderful. Secretary, are there any nominations in order for the Office of Secretary? Kesar, okay.
Second.
Who was it? Councillor Kesar?
Councillor Kesar.
That's what happens with Mr. Kesar.
Second.
Thank you, member Hoy. Okay. All those in favor of member Kesar for the Secretary, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Wonderful. Yes, congratulations. Chair Cook, would you like to take over the meeting at this point?
I would.
Or? Yes, yes, yes.
I agree, Sally.
Heavy gavel on Henderson.
Good, thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. So, I believe we're at information five, is that correct? Five, five? All right. Thank you for being patient, so, and thank you, member Moore Green, for your work as Chair this past year. I appreciate it. All right, so I would like to ask the Budget Officer Jacobs to review the information items and present the five-year forecasts under the Agenda heading Special Orders of Business.
Thank you very much, Chair Cook. Good evening, I'm Kelly Jacobs, the city's Budget Officer. We have a lot of information to cover this evening. I'm going to be talking really fast. The information items for this evening's meeting include four quarterly financial summaries, fiscal year 2018 fourth quarter reports for the City and Urban Renewal Agency, and fiscal year 2019 first quarter reports for both entities. These are items 5A, 5B, 5C, and 5D on the Agenda. I will not be reviewing the quarterly summaries with you in any depth this evening. However, I would like to note that we produce and distribute these documents as part of a discipline of monitoring, analysis, and reporting that includes the annual comprehensive financial report, quarterly investment reports, the financial forecasts, the capital improvement plan, and the annual budget. This work is not exclusive to the Budget Finance and Purchasing Division, as we work collaboratively with every city department in managing the city's finances. In the quarterly summaries, upward pointing arrows in reference to revenues are good. They mean increases in the various taxes, fees, rents, fines, state shared resources or grants that support a fund. Upward pointing arrows in the sections discussing expenditures demonstrate a year-to-year increase in costs. The ticker, which is, the example here on the slide is at the bottom of the slide, so the ticker at the bottom of each page of the city's fourth quarter summary is a quick status check for each fund. The display includes total resources and expenditures and the resulting ending working capital. Where the ending working capital is highlighted in green, it means a year-over-year increase. A blue highlighted number means working capital decreased. In some cases, a decrease can be planned for circumstance, in other cases, a declining working capital can be a sign of financial distress, signifying a trending imbalance between revenues and expenditures. As we discuss the financial forecast this evening, this view of working capital with capital will be one focus. Items 5E and 5F provide an update to the Budget Committee on two of the initiatives of the Strategic Plan Goal area of Sustainable Services Delivery. Item 5E is an update on the city's first-year experience implementing Priority-Based Budgeting, or PBB. PBB is a recognized best practice to help local governments identify what they are in the business of doing, and determine if resources are being used to their highest and best use to deliver on outcomes desired by the community. We have a solid beginning with this first year, as noted in the report, but there is certainly more work to do. Perhaps the most significant and immediate need is identifying key performance indicators or metrics that help us determine progress or success, and can be effectively used to communicate progress and the value of a program or service to the community. The second report, item 5F, highlights the efforts of the Sustainable Services Revenue Task Force. The task force met multiple times this fall and narrowed 13 revenue options to a recommendation of three for city councils' consideration. The task force recommendation, which will be formally submitted to the city council in January, includes an operating fee and an employee-paid payroll tax, two options that can be focused on the city's general fund, and a local gas tax which would support the ongoing operation and maintenance of the transportation system. I will pause here to allow questions regarding the first six information items before I move on to item 5G. Moving on. Nope, not moving on.
Sorry, one question. You said that you're still working on developing, identifying metrics for judging the work under the priority-based budgeting. Is there certain areas where it's more difficult than others to come up with metrics, or can you describe that?
Well, this really is metrics for all of our programs. I mean, those kind of key performance indicators that say, yes, we've made progress, we have a level of success, we can appreciate and understand the influence that this program or service has on one of the result areas or multiple result areas. So it's part of the implementation, and it's just another kind of big lift as part of that implementation. So it's work that we'll be undertaking soon.
Okay.
Councillor McCooy?
So, on the priority-based budgeting, if a lot of this work's been done, when does council see the results of the work that's been done and the ratings on all the different?
Right, and I will tell you this, my focus has been on forecasting. So we've just completed the priority-based budgeting, that first year of implementation, and we're just getting that information out to departments, how their programs fared. So I would imagine sometime early next year, I'll look to the city manager for...
Yeah, certainly before April.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Because I'd like to, well, I'd like to come...
Have a good look at it, Steve.
I would like to come to the council with...
It'd be nice if they had a good look on it before they get into the budgeting process. Council ought to have a say-so on how these things were judged, not just let the staff judge them and prevent a fait accompli to the council.
So, if there are no further questions, I'll move on to the forecast presentation. So I have the opportunity to present to you this evening the forecast for fiscal years 2020 through 2024. But first, I need to recognize and thank the department analysts, directors, and staff that dedicated the hours necessary to assist my team in producing this important financial planning document. This table of contents slide represents the components of my presentation this evening. Item 5G of the Agenda includes forecasts for 14 city funds. I will briefly comment on 10 of the 14, and spend more time discussing the results for the Willamette Valley Communication Center, Transportation Services, Utility, and General Funds. The goal of Sustainable Services Delivery, one of seven goals in the council's strategic plan, is alignment of city services and resources, and maintenance of a fund balance for the future through redesigning the budget process, and identifying the desired level of services that can be sustained, revenues to support those services, and alternative ways to deliver services and generate cost savings. The information presented in the forecast validates the importance and necessity of the city council's expressed commitment to the goal of Sustainable Services Delivery and the associated actions. In recent years, the city's use of forecasting allowed the city manager and council to act well in advance to prevent issues with fiscal health. There are examples in the fund forecast being reviewed this evening. Financial forecasting effectively demonstrated the need for the streetlight fee which relieved the Transportation Services Fund of the cost of operating the streetlight system. The fee helped to provide some stability to a fund in financial distress. Forecasting also revealed a threat to financial viability for the Willamette Valley Communication Center Fund unless action was taken. Financial modeling offered a level of clarity to the 911 center agencies that made a difficult choice, significantly raising rates, and inevitable response. Forecasting is both art and science. It is not an absolute prediction of the future. A forecast model projects a range of possible outcomes using known variables and assumptions. Revenues would need to be received, and expenditures incurred exactly as projected for the exact result to be realized. The forecast is a source of information, one of many the city uses to develop the upcoming fiscal year budget and to aid policy and decision-makers. By modeling a baseline forecast, we can provide the Budget Committee, city council, and our community members with a long-range perspective of today's financial decisions. Forecasting provides the fiscal health checkup of revenues, expenditures, future cash flow, and working capital. The forecasts presented this evening are built around a baseline set of assumptions that represent a reasonable level of consistency with the status quo. We believe the forecasts are objective, but there are bound to be variations from the estimates. This work is done at a very granular level. Property tax information is received from the counties, and individual properties are compared year-over-year. This level of analysis has produced highly accurate estimates over the past several years. Personnel costs, the major expense associated with delivering services, are calculated at the position level to enhance accuracy. This forecast uses annual market adjustments for salaries and employees' rates contained in labor agreements where applicable. Health benefit rates are established using actuarial advice, and are informed by forecasting for the self-insurance fund. Materials and services have been inflated by a general rate of 3% or the specific rate developed through modeling, such as those for fleet services, liability insurance, and radio communications. This graph demonstrates the cost within the forecast for PERS-related expenses in the general fund. The five-year forecast, employee rates for the fiscal year 2020 biennium established by the PERS board, and estimates for fiscal year 2022 and 2024 biennium. The city's estimates for the 2020 biennium rates prove to be quite accurate, more accurate than the initial PERS board advisory rates. The city funds have, the 10 city funds have a one-page summary in the forecast document, beginning on page 43. Using the status of working capital as a measure of fiscal health, many of the funds in this subset appear to be in good shape through the forecast period. It is important to note that while these forecasts are summarized on one page, the modeling required to generate the data is much the same as what is employed to develop the more contextualized forecasts that we will be discussing this evening. The last four funds listed on this slide, starting with the WVCC Fund. The Willamette Valley Communication Center Fund supports the provision of emergency dispatch services to 29 police, fire, and emergency medical services agencies in Marion, Polk, and Lincoln Counties. As noted earlier, WVCC and its member agencies have used financial modeling to help inform recommendations to the city council for the past several years. The forecast for fiscal year 2020 through fiscal year 2024 uses the same escalator, 4.7% annually, for member agency rates. For each of the forecasts reviewed this evening, there will be two slides depicting the actual forecast. The first depiction is this numeric table, and it resembles the display on page 36 for the WVCC forecast. The second display, and I'm going to switch to that now, is a graphic display. It converts the numeric table to this graphic that demonstrates the relationship of revenues and net expenditures, and the trajectory of working capital. The result of this current service delivery forecast is revenues and net expenditures that are approximately equivalent with investment of working capital during the five-year period for an essential technology need. Replacement of the computer-aided dispatch system is incorporated in the WVCC forecast, estimated at $2.4 million, with the purchase spanning a two-year period fiscal years 2021 and 2022. While we attempt to be as objective and accurate as possible with our forecasting, the forecasts are subject to variability with actual results that differ from the dozens of assumptions within the models. With this in mind, we utilize the representation you see on this slide to demonstrate through the forecast period our best estimate of the result of working capital, and what happens with just a 1% variation in revenues and expenditures. Where available, the adopted policy level for working capital or fund balance is overlaid on this information. The gold line across this five-year groupings represents the policy adopted by the WVCC board to help guide its budget recommendations. The blue bar at the center of each grouping represents the result to WVCC's working capital based on the forecast. The green bar represents the forecast result augmented by an additional 1% of revenue growth in agency rates, and an additional 1% of expenditure savings. The compounded outcome of these variables is $2.8 million of working capital in excess of policy by fiscal year 2024. The red bar reflects no change to revenues, as the annual 4.7% rate increases are part of the WVCC board's plan for ongoing financial stability, but it does represent the opposite trajectory for savings at 1% lower for each of the five years. Under this scenario, working capital falls below the WVCC board policy by the close of fiscal year 2020. Yes?
Thank you. Who's on the WVCC board?
I believe it is the member ag...
I don't need people, I do...
The member agencies. And, golly, I would probably need Brian to help me with some of those names. I mean, certainly, it's the City of Salem, Police and Fire, Marion County Sheriff...
That's all I'm interested in. It is represented from each body that's served by the W, and I see the chief is nodding his head up there.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
I'm moving on now to the Transportation Services Fund. The Public Works Department's Transportation Services Fund supports the operation and maintenance of the city's streets, traffic signals, and sidewalks. The Transportation Services Fund provides the financial structure for the department to respond to city council goals that address long-term support of community needs for safety, livability, environmental health, and economic development. Two factors have substantially contributed to the stabilization of the Transportation Services Fund as displayed in this forecast result from the top of page 22 in the forecast document. The first contributing factor is the implementation of the streetlight fee and fund to relieve the cost of operating and maintaining the streetlight system. The savings to this fund for electricity costs are about $1.3 million each year. In 2017, the Oregon Legislature passed HB 2017 to make a significant investment in transportation infrastructure, the second factor aiding this fund. State highway revenue, which is distributed to local jurisdictions by formula, is anticipated to increase over the next five years. Based upon the state's revenue projections, the Transportation Services Fund will have the capacity to sustain operations, but will be unable to support any significant structural pavement maintenance and reconstruction activities. For the current year, fiscal year 2019, forecast and budget, we forecast and budget a small annual allocation for safe crossings, transportation opportunity grants, and limited preventive maintenance, pavement maintenance. The fiscal year 2019 budget also included two paving projects totaling $1.2 million, one on Orchard Heights Road Northwest, and the other on Market Street Northeast. Fiscal year 2019 began with working capital at $3.92 million, and year-end estimates reflect use of approximately $1.8 million to balance expenditures. The decline in fund balance is the result of greater investment in one-time pavement rehabilitation activities and special projects. As this graph illustrates, as well as the numeric table preceding it, this level of annual investment would not be sustainable. This display of potential variability within the Transportation Services Fund forecast takes what we believe to be a probable result, represented by the blue bars, and augmenting it by 1% of additional revenue and 1% of additional expenditure savings. The outcome, represented by the green bars, is a best-case scenario. On the other end of the scenario is the red bar depiction of 1% less revenue and 1% greater expense or lowered savings. The compounded result of this scenario is a 93% decline in working capital in fiscal year 2022 as compared to fiscal year 2019 year-end estimate. Utility Fund. This fund supports the ongoing operation and maintenance of the utility, including treatment, storage, and delivery of the highest-quality drinking water to residents, businesses, and industries, collection, conveyance, and treatment of wastewater before it returns to the Willamette River, and collection and conveyance of stormwater runoff from streets, buildings, and other hard surfaces throughout the system to reduce risks of flooding and protect the environment. In addition, the fund supports the payment of utility revenue bonds for system infrastructure improvements, as well as annual transfers to the Capital Improvements Fund for pay-as-you-go capital projects. The utilities, the city's utility is in very good shape. When the water advisory occurred in summer 2018, the city was able to navigate the financial challenge and plan for investments without an immediate rate impact. This forecast anticipates a $50 million debt issuance in February 2020 for projects focused on water treatment and a supplemental water supply. Continued improvements must be made to the utility at a sustainable pace, balancing rate impacts with the rehabilitation, expansion, resiliency, and modernization needs of the system. This table from page 30 of the forecast document, and the associated graphic display, illustrates the utility fund's fiscal health with rate adjustments for 2019 and 2020 of 3% for water, 2.5% for wastewater, and 5% for stormwater. The remaining years of the forecast assume a 3% revenue slope for water and wastewater, and 5% for stormwater, escalating costs to operate the utility, and anticipated savings of approximately 8%. Over the five-year period, the amount to repay debt and transfers for system capital projects ranges between $30 and $34 million annually, with working capital slightly In the forecast variability display, the 1% of additional revenue and additional savings makes an already positive result so much better. Both the blue and green bars provide sufficient working capital or reserves to cover 120 days of operating costs, and an additional amount equivalent to annual debt service. The negative variables, 1% less revenue and 1% more expense or less savings, create a result that is less than 120 days of operating costs. Is there established policy level for the working capital fund for the utility, the way there is for other funds? There is a fund balance policy for the utility. I didn't demonstrate it on the slide because we're so far outside of it, so I just didn't simply put it on the slide. But there is a fund balance policy for the utility. Good question, thank you. The city's general fund supports operations in the areas of public safety, planning, code enforcement, public library, municipal court, parks and recreation, urban development, and support services that provide a citywide benefit. The fund accounts for 724 full-time equivalent positions, 59% of the city's total of 1,236. This chart displays the general fund-supported departments and the corresponding expenditure budget for year one of the five-year forecast period. This graph illustrates recent revenue and expenditure history in the general fund and the result of the five-year forecast. It notes the impact of several significant actions over the past nine years, including the closure of fire stations, elimination of approximately 40 positions in the fund about six years ago, and four years of legislated PERS rate relief. During the period of PERS rate relief, the city also gained revenue from a real-market valuation reset, and significantly less property tax losses from compression. This graph also demonstrates the use of a total of $3.1 million in working capital to balance expenses for the two most recently completed fiscal years. The general fund forecast table replicated on this slide appears in the publication on page 11. Thanks to the city's strong financial management practices, as recognized in recent bond rating reviews, and the factors previously noted, the city established a balance in working capital for the general fund that exceeds the council's policy of 15% of budgeted revenues. Sufficient working capital is not only necessary to maintain a favorable credit rating and reduce borrowing costs, but also to provide the cash on hand to deal with the cyclical nature of revenue receipts. With the factors noted earlier, temporarily lowered PERS rates, recovery in the housing market with improved property tax receipts, and careful management of spending, the city has maintained service delivery within a strong financial condition for the general fund as measured by working capital. However, most recent experience and future projections demonstrate a sharp shift in these metrics. The general fund five-year forecast is built with a baseline set of assumptions that align with recent results and current fiscal year projections. The forecast continues the trend experienced with the two most recently completed fiscal years, where revenues exceeded expenditures. The gap widens with costs escalating more precipitously than revenues. The general fund is predicted to realize increases in almost every revenue type, with an aggregate increase of 2.1% to 4.2% through the forecast period. Individual revenue types are escalated in accordance with recent trends, consistent with a compounded level of growth over the past five years, factoring all available data and analysis to support projections. Consistent with last year, we have continued property valuation increases at approximately 4% for all years of the forecast period. The estimated increases are above the statutory limitation due to anticipation of new growth. The forecasted rate of revenue growth is not sufficient to meet the increasing cost for providing services, which are anticipated to grow by a range of 2.9% to more than 7% year-over-year. The primary drivers of expense increases for the fund remain those associated with the cost of employees. The current rate for PERS Tier 1 and 2 is 21.07%, and increases to 25.49% in fiscal year 2020. The impact of rate increases for all PERS tiers calculated against higher salary costs is anticipated to inflate the year-over-year expense for PERS and the general fund by approximately $2.8 million. Savings in this forecast are estimated at 2% of operating budgets and 2.5 million of unspent contingency. Anticipated saving rates are in line with recent trends, but are subject to fluctuations. Yes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
How far back have you been doing the forecast?
Mr. Mayor had a question first. We'll let him proceed, and then you can go next. Mr. Sund?
I wanted to find out, Kelly, your confidence in, go back to your general fund.
Mm-hmm.
What's your confidence in that slope? I mean, are you pretty confident that's where we're headed? What's the variable that would slow that down?
More revenue.
What about, what about less PERS, less healthcare?
Pardon?
Less PERS, less healthcare?
Well, certainly.
I mean, is that the driver here? Is that what you're saying?
Driver in the general fund, because it's a service-delivery fund, are the costs of the personnel, yes. So compensation, PERS, health benefits, all contribute to that expense.
Does that assume increased hires in various areas?
It does not. It is current FTE.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Sund?
How far back have you been doing the forecast? Oh, sorry. Is it okay?
Mr. Mayor had a question first. We'll let him proceed, and then you can go next. Mr. Sund?
I wanted to find out, Kelly, your confidence in, go back to your general fund. What's your confidence in that slope? I mean, are you pretty confident that's where we're headed? What's the variable that would slow that down?
More revenue.
What about, what about less PERS, less healthcare?
Pardon?
Less PERS, less healthcare?
Well, certainly.
I mean, is that the driver here? Is that what you're saying?
Driver in the general fund, because it's a service-delivery fund, are the costs of the personnel, yes. So compensation, PERS, health benefits, all contribute to that expense.
Does that assume increased hires in various areas?
It does not. It is current FTE.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Sund?
How far back have you been doing the forecast?
For me personally, about 15 years. But for the city, I think the city started doing financial forecasting for the general fund, I think in the 70s.
So, you probably, you may not recall, but can we, would we be able to see, like in FY '16, prior to the PERS rate relief, what did the forecast look like compared to what it looks like now?
Sure.
You know, along the way?
Right, and, and I think you would, I mean, there's, we have forecasts every year, so we have, we have layers of outcomes that we anticipate for a particular fiscal year before, you know, it falls off the forecast. The reason, the reason that some of those actions were taken in those earlier years that were demonstrated in that graph was because of forecasting and what we saw coming up. So, I mean, the forecasting actually alerted us to problems that, at the beginning of the recession, approximately 40 positions were eliminated in the general fund, and then a few years later, another 40 positions were eliminated.
Could, Kelly, could we, I want to follow up on Mr. Sund's question, because I think it's a really interesting one. Can we see that historical...
then a few years later, another 40 positions were eliminated.
Kelly, I want to follow up on Mr. Sun's question, because I think it's a really interesting one. Can we see that historical presentation of each of those five-year cycles? That's why I asked you about your confidence. Every five years, the slope looks like this, and I want to be sure I understand. Every year, five years out, we're off the cliff. And I think Counselor Anderson has had a really good analogy to Thelma and Louise driving parallel to the cliff.
It's got to be my favorite experience in a Budget Committee meeting, is that analogy.
Yeah, I'm sure you have. Well, I would really, I think it would be helpful to see how this has gone historically as we look at any kind of revenue recommendation to the counselor, to the people, so we can have some sense of confidence as well.
And I will say to you, well, I do have confidence in the display that you see there, that that is where we are heading. There are dozens and dozens, hundreds, of variables in the general fund. And so, just as we noted in that graph that I provided earlier, the one that, if I can go in the right direction, looks like that, there was that crossover between revenues and expenditures, where expenditures were exceeding revenue, and the council acted at that point to eliminate positions and close fire stations. The legislative PERS rate relief, the council wisely, as you know, set that aside in working capital, because we anticipated that those rates, that that would be overturned in the courts, and we would resume higher PERS rates.
Are you assuming there'll be no further collaring of rates, then? That we're going to look at the full bore all of a sudden?
Well, you know, and I'm more than happy.
It looks like three years out, you have them stopping the collaring and letting her rip.
Right now, that is what we're anticipating. And I would love to have David Lacy respond to your question, because he is absolutely expert at estimating the PERS rates.
Oh, I know.
And far superior, actually, as I mentioned in the presentation, to rates that we received from the advisory board.
So, David Lacy from Finance. So, what was presented in the five-year forecast does represent single collar increases for all five years of the forecast. And at this point, we're fairly confident in the next four years of the forecast. The fifth year is still a bit of a wild card, but as was even discussed at the recent PERS Board meeting on Friday, because returns have not come in as expected this year, you know, that's kind of the squeezing of the water balloon that pushes that down the road. So, we are still expecting, I would say it's a more aggressive forecast in the sense that we're not being as conservative as it could be, because we're hovering right around that 70% funded status, which could dip us into that double-rate collar. For the forecast period, we're taking a more aggressive stance by saying we'll remain above that 70% and have that single-collar rage. So, it does represent collared rates for the entirety of the forecast.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you. I have just two slides to go.
Doing great.
So, this graph, which you've seen displayed for the three previous funds, reveals possible scenarios for the general fund. The probable scenario is just that, the likely outcome for the next five years based on all of the assumptions, analyses, evaluation, and calculations contained in the forecast. While working capital, the gold line on this graph is maintained above city council policy of 15% of revenues through fiscal year 2019. It falls below policy for fiscal year 2020. In the better-case scenario, represented by the green bar with 1% greater revenue and 1% more savings, working capital is not additionally sustained at city council policy. The scenario represented by the red bar is overall 1% lower revenues and 1% more expense or less savings, the result of which would lead to noncompliance with city council policy during the current fiscal year. So, what's next? On January 23, 2019, the city council will hold the second of two work sessions for development of the 2019 policy agenda. City staff will be developing budgets and the annual capital improvement plan from January through March 2019. We will continue to employ the city's six result areas of good governance, natural environment stewardship, safe community, safe, reliable, and efficient infrastructure, strong and diverse economy, and welcoming and livable community as a framework for the budget publication. The next set of Budget Committee meetings will occur on April 24, May 1, and May 8, 2019. At these three meetings, the Budget Committee will receive the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget, provide an opportunity for public testimony, set the annual property tax levy, and offer a budget recommendation to the city council. Following the Budget Committee meetings, the city council will convene in June for budget hearings, where the council can modify the Budget Committee's recommended budget up to 10% prior to adoption in late June. And concurrent with all of these activities, we will be advancing our use of the tool priority-based budgeting and developing the metrics to improve its functionality, as well as supporting the city council as it further explores the revenue options recommended by the Sustainable Services Revenue Task Force. That concludes the forecast presentation, and city staff are available to respond to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Member Sun?
So, you mentioned revenue when we were discussing the gap. Has the city ever closed a gap with revenue? We're talking 14 million, because this is cumulative along the way here. So, in two years, to be at 14,272,38 revenue alone?
We have, not to my knowledge, has there been any additional new revenue added to the general fund to relieve a situation like this? No.
And what's so different about 2019? Is it just the PERS? I mean, it seems like when you look at this graph with the green and the blue line, this is the year where it really took off.
Right. And fiscal year 2019, this result that you see for fiscal year 2019 in this graph is very similar to what we forecast last year for 2019. We're seeing, you know, everything that we thought we would see, we are seeing it in terms of expense and an anticipated level of savings, and also in the revenue that we're receiving. So, we're not seeing anything outside of what, you know, that would seem unusual, you know, outside of what we forecast.
And then the other question I had was on the PERS assumptions. What kind of investment return specifically are in those assumptions? I mean, I know this year has not been ideal for most, and is that, you said that we're even less conservative than we could be?
I'll let David respond to that, read.
Yeah, so what PERS uses is what's called an assumed earnings rate, and currently it's at 7.2%. Their year-to-date earnings right now, I believe, is about 1.5%. So, it's going to be off-target from what that is. That rate is used for earnings crediting for current members' benefits and also for the modeling that they do over 20-years period to bring the funded status back to 100%.
Thank you.
All right. So, in addition to the forecast discussion, this part of the agenda is also an opportunity for the Budget Committee to discuss other issues or concerns. Are there any that the members wish to weigh at this time? All right, then we'll go ahead and call for public testimony. Is there anyone present who did not have the opportunity to provide testimony on agenda For the Budget Committee? Thank you. All right, so if there is no other business, seeing no one, I will adjourn the Budget Committee. Thank you.
Call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem to order. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Kaser is absent. Commissioner Anderson?
President.
Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner McCoy?
Here.
Commissioner Osick?
Here.
Commissioner Hoy?
Here.
Commissioner Cook?
Here.
And Vice Chair Lewis?
Here.
Okay, we have any approvals, any additions or deletions? I don't think so.
No.
Thank you. Public comment? Anybody here want to speak to the Housing Authority of the City of Salem? I didn't think so, but I thought I had to ask. Okay, Vice Chair Lewis, the consent calendar?
Yes, I move passage of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Lewis, seconded by a member, Cook, to approve the consent calendar. To your motion?
Yes, on the consent calendar this evening, we have the minutes of the November 26 Salem Housing Authority meeting, and also two resolution items. One, 3.3A, which is the low-income housing tax credits for the rental assistance demonstration project, and then 3.3B, low-income housing tax credits for the development of the Quinta Hall and rehabilitation of South Fair Apartments.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Nothing from you, Andy?
Yeah.
Happy? Just say Merry Christmas, and we're done, huh?
Thank you.
I would say, before we close here, this is my last meeting, sharing this, in the staff report, it pointed out that Kelly Bataglia had left, and Kelly was one of the drivers of our rental assistance program, along with Pamela Gary, Sonia Highland. And so, that's been very successful. We've got 100 people housed in that program now that we're chronically homeless, with another 100 in the queue waiting to be housed. And the staff is pursuing other ways to fund this, to get those other folks, 100 people housed. And the two motions we just passed for all the folks here, it's going to go towards, we're going to get 60 or 70 new low-income housing, new properties, and we're revamping and remodeling some of the existing properties with some of the motion we passed here. So, it's been a good year for the Housing Authority, Andy. Thank you for that, and a thanks, though she's not here, to Kelly Bataglia. With that, I call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem adjourned.
Call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency to order for Monday, December 10. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Board Member Kaser is absent. Board Member Anderson?
Present.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member McCoy?
Here.
Board Member Osick?
Here.
Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Cook?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
And Chair Bennett?
Here. Okay. Do we have any additions or deletions?
Nope, no, we don't.
Okay. Anyone signed up? Yes. Three minutes, Steve. If you'd just give your name and address or ward number, the light will go off at two minutes with orange, red at three, and that's when I start making a lot of noise about stopping. So, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Steve Johnson, 201 Liberty Street, southeast Salem, Oregon. I'm here speaking to Action Item 3.3A, just to go on record as recommending and supporting passage of the motion presented to approve an amendment and addendum to the Salem Conference Center Management Agreement to permit the renovation of the kitchen facilities. I'm with the Salem Group, which is the management company associated with the Convention Center. I'm here also to answer questions if any come up during the course of conversation and discussion. That's all I have.
Great, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Johnson? Great, thank you. Okay, consent calendar?
I move approval of the consent calendar with following pull, 3.3A by Counselor Anderson.
Second.
So, that leaves on the consent calendar, Item 3.3B, which will approve exemptions from the grant program eligibility restrictions to allow a grant to the Mid-Willamette Valley Community Action Agency to construct a sobering center, and that grant's from the Urban Renewal Agency. Right? And that would be up to an amount of $300,000, and they apparently need about $200,000 to get that built.
Okay, any questions? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on then to special orders of business. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we authorize the Executive Director to execute the attached agreement and addendum to the Convention Center Management Agreement to temporarily suspend gain-loss reserve account requirements to facilitate the remodel and expansion of the Salem Convention Center kitchen facility.
Well done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can read with my glasses on. And I pulled this because a couple meetings ago, there was an issue about changing the bylaws at the Convention Center to deal with future expansion. And we had a discussion then, or I had a discussion then, that was, is the Convention Center making money? Are they not? And if they want to expand in the future, we need to see the figures and the documents for that. And then I saw this, talking about expansion. But I had a discussion with Director Rutherford, who said this is a completely different thing. And I would like if you could just take a minute or two to explain what is happening. And I don't know if you can say what temporary suspend gain-loss reserve account requirements means, but give it a try.
Yes, Kristin Rutherford, Urban Development Director. So, at our last meeting, we brought forward a plan amendment to the Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area Plan to amend the project list and add some new projects in support of the city's strategic plan in addressing homelessness. And also, as a part of this work, we added expansion of the Convention Center as a future eligible project. While the plan funded the original construction of the Convention Center, it does not speak to future expansion. So, we cleaned that up as we were going through this amendment process. What's before you this evening is a separate project. This is not the large expansion of the Convention Center. This is remodeling and renovation and some expansion of space within the kitchen area that is not going to be funded from urban renewal tax increment revenue, but instead would be funded from the gain-loss reserve account. When the Convention Center went into operation several years ago, there was a gain-loss reserve account that was established, is contributed to on an annual basis from revenue from Convention Center operations. And the point of the gain-loss reserve account is to fund any operational deficiencies, which has not been the case, or have not been any operational deficiencies where they've needed to tap that account since the Convention Center became operational. And it is also intended to fund smaller-scale capital improvement projects, and it has been used a number of times over the years for that purpose. So, that's what we're proposing here. When this account was established, it was established with a $4 million minimum threshold, and the requirement that if it were to fall below that $4 million amount, then the city would backfill that. And the mechanism has been to do that through TOT funds. So, because of the amount that this project would cause it to go under that $4 million limit, within normal operational contributions to this account, within just a couple of years, the Convention Center will bring it back up to that $4 million level, which would take about the same amount of time if we use TOT funding. So, this way, if we can defer this requirement for a couple of years, the Convention Center will make the account whole again, and it won't impact TOT funding or impact other grants that we might use TOT funding for.
Very good. Any further questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We have no information reports, just brief congratulations, Director Rutherford, on the $43 million hotel. That's very exciting. We're all looking forward to hearing more. Thank you. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for December 10 to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Kaser is absent. Counselor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Here.
Counselor Osick?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay. Do we have any additions or deletions?
No, we don't. I have a motion, though.
Okay.
I move to reorder the agenda, to move Item 5, which is other special orders of business, move it on the agenda in front of Item 4, public hearings. Reason to do this, there's an item we want to discuss, and I've got some folks I hear think want to talk about it from the Public Transiting Committee, which Counselor Hoy and I served on for over a year. And we don't have to watch them to wait for the several hours of testimony we're about to hear. We'll get that done, and them out of here. If they want to stay, they can, but if they don't, they'll be able to leave before their testimony and the hearing starts.
Okay. So, that's going to come, where on the agenda? Could you say it again for me? So, that's gonna come, where on the agenda, could you say it again for me?
Uh, Director, the board, uh, public hearings, uh, the motion.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood it. Okay, all those in, second, did I have a second?
Yes.
Hoy, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay. And there were no additions or deletions?
No.
Nope, okay. Do I have any public comment? Yeah. Okay, any council comments? Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am pleased to announce that through a competitive application process, South Salem Connect has been selected as a City of Salem partnership area for 2019, 2020. With city support, the group plans to focus on social connectivity and active transportation over the next two years to decrease social isolation, um, and improve mental health and physical well-being in our community. In addition to providing support through neighborhood associations, the City of Salem Neighborhood Partnership Program collaborates with two neighborhood areas at a time on neighborhood strengthening activities, and every year, existing partnership teams and new groups have the opportunity to apply to receive additional city resources for neighborhood strengthening activities for two years at a time. Residents, property owners, renters, schools, businesses, nonprofits, churches, and other community organizations interested in livability in Salem neighborhoods are always invited to participate. I'm really happy about this, especially given recent events, so thank you.
Yeah, well, congratulations to that neighborhood, that, that's a really excellent program, it's worked extremely well in other neighborhoods, so something to look forward to. Any other counselor comments? Counselor Anderson?
Uh, I know we did this somewhat last week, but I'd just like to note, uh, that this is Counselor McCoy's last night on the council, and I just want to express
What?
My appreciation for his dedicate, dedication and service over the years to the council.
Yeah, we'll miss you again, Counselor. Any other counselor comments? Mr. City Manager?
A reminder, there will be a work session, uh, a week from tonight, from 6:00 to 8:00 in this room, uh, with Marion County regarding solid waste, 6:00 to 8:00 here in the council chambers, one week from tonight.
Okay. Alrighty. I've got a pe, a couple of folks signed up for public comment. Si Smith?
So, I'm, uh, Si Smith, I wanted to make a comment about, uh, some, I have some written remarks, um, that I wanted to go through about the Transit Committee, uh, recommendation.
Yes.
I was on the Transit Committee, I'm the State Geographic Information Officer, and, uh, served on the Transit Committee, um, and I just wanted to amplify some of the, um, some of the recommendations that were made, that I felt were, uh, very important. The first one was about prioritizing transit supportive considerations as part of updating the Salem Comprehensive Plan with an emphasis on the transit core network. Because those ideas were forward-thinking and were not really things that could necessarily be implemented with current policy directives or available funds, that's where the majority of the, uh, sort of detailed work of the Transit Committee recommendations ended up. I'm not sure what the, um, mechanism for communication is between this report and the staff and advisory groups that are informing the update of the Comprehensive Plan, but it would really be a loss of invested time, thinking and ideas, as well as staff and volunteer hours not to incorporate those, uh, ideas in that work. If you consider the timing of funding availability as a result of HB 2017, improved transit service would be a point of opportunity for both transit and the city. Uh, the data that can be collected over the months that follow the availability of increased funding, uh, increases in ridership, increases in, uh, related conflicts, et cetera, can really help begin to plan the phasing for improvements to transit infrastructure and amenities. Um, and, uh, work with the, uh, work with chariots, and other recommendation was working with chariots to update the 2009 Memorandum of Understanding between the city and chariots to develop a common understanding of how the city and chariots can continue to improve working relationships. An update to that MOU, which is nearly 10 years old, would be very timely. Um, in addition to the MOU acting as an agreement between Public Works and the Transit District, city staff from community development and economic development should be considered as necessary in the discussions and development. And then, um, finally, I'd like to say that, uh, one of the recommendations was to evaluate jointly with chariots the feasibility of a downtown circulator bus. I think, uh, if that was visually distinct, that could have, uh, a real, uh, positive impact, and, uh, that was one of the mayor's favorite projects, I know, so, uh, I know the Transit Committee would really like to see that happen, too. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Smith, thank you very much for serving on that. You'll recall, this is a committee I proposed to you, you all approved, and we appointed. They've done really tremendous work. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, I didn't have a question for you, Mr. Smith, I just wanted to thank you for your service on the committee, and thank all the members, it was a really excellent group, and, uh, I thought, a lot of folks put many hours into that, and I appreciate your volunteer time on that, and I think it was a really, really great process, so thank you.
And we won't lose track of it.
No, no, we will not lose track of it.
Yeah, I assure you of that. Counselor McCoy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, um, yes, I, I would say that the, the, the motion's gonna be, uh, to accept the recommendations and direct staff to return with a work plan for implementation, so.
Very good. All right, E.M. Easterling. I missed Mr. Easterling at our last meeting, so he decided to do an encore here.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Bennett, members of the council, E.M. Easterly, 775 Fair Gardens Northwest. I suspect that an email I sent to the council earlier today probably ended up in a pile of, uh, commentary regarding the main topic. Uh, thank you, Counselor McCoy. Um, I'm here tonight to again ask you, as I did two weeks ago, to demonstrate the city council's commitment to budget funds necessary to eliminate the legal contradictions stemming from conflicts between the wording of the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan and the Salem Revised Code. Also, to reconcile past council decisions with the multiple legal contradictions that exist in the Salem Revised Code. Last Monday, I emailed you two examples. One asked the budget, asked for budget funds to address a yet-to-be-acknowledged inaccurate City of Salem mapping of the Salem City Limits and the Salem Urban Growth Boundary. The second, an acknowledged mis-mapping of the Salem Urban Growth Boundary that has sat in Mr. Atchison's legal department for more than three months. This morning, I emailed you a third legal contradiction between the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan and the Salem Revised Code. In essence, the Salem Revised Code definition of the Willamette Greenway does not agree with the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan and the Salem Greenway Plan definitions. I stand before you this evening to answer your questions and urge you to invite Mr. Powers to correct Salem's legal contradictions.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the consent calendar.
Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar with the following poll, 3.3A by myself.
Second.
Consent calendar consists of the minutes from the November 26th City Council meeting and the December 3rd City Council meeting. It also, uh, has, um, uh, Action Item 3.3B, um, would authorize a sewer service connection to a new single-family residence on a parcel that is outside of but contiguous to its current city limits, conditioned on the property owner filing a complete application for annexation, an annexation agreement, in paying all usual and customary fees and service charges. That property's at 65, 65 Sunnyside Road Southeast. 3.3C, authorize a city manager to execute the attached intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Geology and Mineral Industries for LiDAR data acquisition. Uh, 3.3D, reappoints John B. Wilson as a municipal judge pro temp for the Salem Municipal Court for a two-year term. 3.3E, authorizes a city manager to execute the attached lease with Pringle Place LLC to store all the, uh, extra water we've got left from last summer. 3.3F is, uh, authorizes a city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the state of Oregon and the City of Salem for a grant of up to $300,000 to assist in the construction of a sobering center. That is, that's the consent calendar.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Uh, as per previous motion, we'll move, uh, five up and year on. Counselor McCoy?
Okay, well, I just wanted, uh, the, given the amount of work, I was, uh, the mayor did me the honor of having me.
Need a motion.
I, I move, uh, Item 3.3A.
Second.
Second by Hoy.
And 3.3A, again, is the, uh, is the, uh, the, uh, report from the, uh, Public Transit Committee. Uh, again, I served on that with, there was, uh, stat, 15 people on that, a number of citizens from all walks of life, um, and, uh, it was, uh, I think, really, as far as, I think, the four years I've been on this, one of the more involved, uh, committees, people showed up, and they showed up 10 different meetings over 11 months, uh, and, uh, we had a lot of different, uh, we, we hashed things out, and I think came up with a very good, broad-based, um, report and recommendations for the staff to look at and to hopefully move forward and implement, things that, um, especially with the new Comprehensive Plan coming, a lot of things, uh, that really deal with, um, how transit can maybe be dealt with in the future, uh, given the continuing congestion, the growth, and probably inevitably the density in buildings and homes that are gonna come in, Salem here in the, in the future years. Uh, this has all kinds of recommendations on, well, how to do, or, things to look at to make, uh, public transit, uh, more effective in terms of, uh, probably what's gonna be the new reality in Salem in the next 20 or 30 years. Um, so I would just like to publicly thank the members of that committee, they did a great job. Again, they showed up, uh, 6:00, 6:30 in the evening, and worked till 7:30 on their work nights, and, uh, were, were loyal members, and I really appreciated that, so I urge your passage of it.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to underscore everything that Counselor McCoy just said. I also wanted to thank, uh, Alan Pollak, the Director of, uh, General Manager of Chariots, as well as, uh, we had several members of their board come to our meetings, were active participants throughout that process, and I think it was, uh, I think, a really nice collaborative process.
And I would, I'm remiss if I didn't bring up Julie Warantke, who was, uh, patient beyond belief with me, and amiable, and we met, uh, if we had 10 meetings, we met 15 or 20 times over the span of this thing, working together, and she authored this, she patiently guided us through this and, uh, pointed out ways we could get where we needed to be without, uh, all kinds of machinations, and, and it's really, this is, this is a result of her hard work that we've got this here. That's a, thank you, Julie.
Yeah, thank you, Julie. Okay, anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay. Gonna, go ahead. Open the public hearing, uh, 18-5, 56.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of hearing an appeal of the Planning Administrator's Decision approving a Class III Site Plan Review, Class II Driveway Approach Permit for a development located at Kubler Boulevard Southeast. The criteria applicable to this appeal are Salem Revised Code 220.005-F3 and SRC 804.025-D. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue shall preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to, to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. The applicant's limited to 10 minutes, the appellant is limited to 10 minutes, neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes, and other interested parties are limited to three minutes, with the applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes as well. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Great, thank you. One thing I would ask is if you have a, uh, cellphone, if you either put it on vibrate or turn it off, we'd appreciate it, that's always interrupting if it, if one goes off. Um, the city attorney?
Before we have the staff presentation, I just wanted to give all the councilors an opportunity to disclose, uh, any ex-party contacts you may have received, uh, by the time the application was submitted. We have received a large number of emails that were forwarded on by many of you, so thank you for that. If there's other communications you received regarding the substance of the application, now is the time to declare them.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, received a letter at my home from Costco, as being a Costco member, I, uh, they encouraged me to email myself, I did that. Uh, other than that, I've shut down all other communications the moment they've started, and they have been numerous.
Are you gonna disclose what you said to yourself? Counselor, Counselor Cook?
Thank you, um, this has come up quite frequently in meetings and, given holiday gatherings, um, but I don't believe any specifics, um, were in line, and I don't believe that it'll affect my decision here today.
Okay. Counselor Lewis?
Uh, I, I too received a letter from Costco, I brought it with me tonight, I think it's been, uh, of record enough that everybody has seen it. Um, I did not email it, uh, email it to myself, I figured I'd gotten enough of those, and, um, I am a member of Costco. I don't think any of those things would prohibit me from making a, uh, independent decision tonight.
Counselor Anderson?
Fourth, first, same as the first, I'm a member of Costco, um, I received it, I opened it enough to see that it wasn't a bill, they're telling me how much money I've saved at Costco, so I didn't even read it.
Counselor Nanki?
Similarly, I'm a member of Costco, and, uh, actually, I opened that letter last night, uh, and then subsequently, I saw Counselor Hoy actually had that in the, uh, the record, and so, uh, I have no other, uh, ex parte to declare.
Counselor McCoy?
Same thing.
Huh, I'm a member of Costco, my wife didn't let me see the letter, apparently. But I don't get to see the bill either, so I guess I'm, okay, I think we're all set to go, then. Aaron?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of council, my name's Aaron Panko with the Community Development Department. Um, tonight's, tonight's case is for an appeal of a site plan review and driveway approach permit, uh, this is case number SPR-dap-1815. Um, at this time, I'd like to enter into the record, the staff report, including its attachments. Uh, the application was submitted on June 6th, um, for, uh, it was submitted to the city for development of the Kubler Gateway Shopping Center, including Costco, a retail fueling station, and four new retail shell buildings. Uh, the Planning Administrator's Decision was issued on October 23rd, um, and we received two notices of appeal on November 7th for this case. This is a vicinity map of the subject property. Property here is about 24 acres in size, uh, the property has frontage along Kubler Boulevard, shown in the red. Uh, Kubler is designated as a parkway in the Salem Transportation System Plan. Uh, property also has frontage along Battle Creek, which is shown as the blue line on the west of the map. Uh, the blue indicates that this is a minor arterial street, um, and then, the other two remaining streets, Boone Road, uh, to the south, in the yellow, is a collector street, and 27th, also in yellow, is a collector street. This is an aerial photo of the property taken, um, this last summer. Um, the property, um, there's, there's currently two, uh, medical office buildings that are in the, uh, lower, uh, southwest portion of the property. Um, along Boone Road, there's, uh, been some development occurring over the summer also, there's a new subdivision, you could see, um, and then, there's a retirement facility, um, that's built on the east, east side of the, uh, the property here. This is a zoning map for the property, uh, the property in question tonight is Zoned CR Retail Commercial, uh, it's shown there in the red. Uh, surrounding properties, um, to the, uh, east, uh, the blue indicates an RA Residential Agriculture Zone. Um, to the south, we have, uh, a yellow, uh, designation as a, a single-family residential. Um, the retirement facility is in a multi-family residential zone, um, and then, uh, there's another RA Residential Agriculture portion to the south. Um, on the west side of, uh, Battle Creek is a CN Neighborhood Commercial Zone and some multi-family, uh, zone properties. And then on the north side of Kubler, And then on the north side of Kubler, um, there's a large portion of property, uh, directly across this, is owned RA Residential Agriculture. Um, and then property, um, at the, uh, I guess, the northeast quadrant of the intersection of Twenty-seventh and Kubler is, uh, CR Retail Commercial. That designation was changed in, uh, twenty-fifteen. Um, in twenty, or two thousand and seven, a final order was adopted by city council approving a change to the comprehensive plan map designation for the easternmost twenty acres of the property, from developing residential to commercial, and then changing the zoning for other property from RA Residential Agriculture to CR Retail Commercial. Um, this is the case number CPC Zone Change ZC-06-06. Uh, and in two thousand and nine, a zone change was approved for the western ten acres of the property to change the zoning district from CO to RA, um, and to change, uh, the CO portion to, um, Retail Commercial. The comprehensive plan change, Zone Change 06-06, was approved subject to seventeen conditions of approval. Thirteen of the conditions relate to transportation infrastructure improvements to mitigate for increase in traffic generated by the future development of the property as a shopping center. Conditions of approval require the property to be developed as a shopping center, including a limit to max, uh, to the maximum gross leasable area of the shopping center not to exceed two, two-hundred-and-forty thousand square feet. And, uh, with the floor area, uh, including the Salem Clinic use, the maximum gross leasable area is not to exceed two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand square feet. The limit on the floor area was conditioned to reduce the size and scale of the development and to limit traffic impacts. Conditions of approval also require greater setbacks, screening, and landscaping where the property is adjacent to residential areas, including to the south along Boone Road. Conditions of approval from previous land use decisions are treated as development standards for the property and are enforced at the time the property is developed. Uh, this is a photo taken, uh, from Kubler, looking towards the development site. Um, you can see, uh, Salem Clinic, uh, is over here. Uh, there's a grove of existing trees, uh, that's near the south end of the property, uh, next to Boone Road. Um, the, the property is largely vacant, though. And here's another, uh, photo, uh, taken from Boone Lo, Road, out looking north, uh, showing that existing grove of trees. And this is the site plan. Um, it shows the layout for the shopping center. The conditions of approval require that the subject property be developed with the shopping center, uh, with a maximum of two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand square feet of gross leasable area. The proposed new buildings total, um, a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty square feet of floor area, and if you include the Salem Clinic buildings, uh, the floor area, uh, floor area for the shopping centers, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-six square feet in size. Um, the proposed uses of the property include Costco wholesale, which, uh, despite its name, is a use that falls under our retail sales use category, um, as we explained in our staff report. There's four new retail buildings, uh, proposed along the north end of the property adjacent to Kubler. Uses for these shell buildings have not been determined at this time, but will likely fall into the retail sales and service category. Um, and a gas service station, uh, to be operated by Costco is provided at the northeast corner of the site. As proposed and conditioned in the Planning Administrator's approval, the site plan applies with the conditions of approval from the previous land use applications, applicable standards of the Salem Revised Code, including landscaping, off-street parking, and setbacks. There are eight Oregon White Oaks that are greater than twenty-four inches in diameter, which are classified as significant trees that are located on the property. This grove of significant trees is located on the southern portion of the property. The proposed site layout places the building footprint for the Costco building in conflict with this grove, and as a result, each of the significant trees is proposed for removal. Uh, for commercial and industrial development, uh, the code allows removal of significant trees when it's necessary for the proposed development. A tree removal permit is not required, and a tree regulation variance where an applicant is required to provide findings and addressing hardship is not required. Um, in this case, the applicant indicates that the proposed layout best minimizes potential impacts to residential neighborhood by utilizing the building itself to screen and buffer onsite activities. And further, the applicant explains that it's not possible to develop a shopping center, um, on the site with a building arrangement and off-street parking layout meeting our code requirements in a way that also preserves the significant trees, and therefore, the removal of these trees is necessary. Per the requirements of Chapter 808, the applicant has demonstrated a need for removal of the significant trees in connection with the proposed development, and is therefore meets the exception. Um, a traffic impact analysis was required with the site plan review application for the proposed development. The TIA, um, has been reviewed by both city staff and the Oregon Department of Transportation. Uh, transportation improvements required for the proposed development include, uh, traffic, uh, traffic signal modifications and striping changes at the Battle Creek and Kubler, um, intersection, a new traffic signal, signal at the, uh, Boone Road and Battle Creek intersection, um, and traffic signal modifications at, uh, the Twenty-seventh and Kubler intersection. The shopping center is accessed by four driveways, an existing driveway on Boone Road that currently serves Salem Clinic, and an existing driveway that provides a right-hand access from Kubler Boulevard. Um, the access on Kubler was, uh, constructed recently with a Kubler Improvement Project, and it was required, uh, required as a condition to serve the shopping center, uh, from comprehensive plan change, Zone Change 06-06. A new driveway is proposed on Boone Road, east of the Costco building, and, uh, proposed roundabout is shown on Twenty-seventh. These improvements adequately mitigate the traffic impacts from this development, and the analysis shows that they meet the, uh, city of Salem and ODOT mobility standards for the proposed year of opening. The October twenty-third Planning Administrator's decision includes seventeen conditions of approval. Eight conditions relate to transportation and utility infrastructure improvements, and seven conditions relate to, uh, development of the site, including, uh, the parking lot, a minimum landscape requirement, and pedestrian access. A condition of approval requires new Oregon White Oaks to be incorporated into the landscape plan, um, and two of the conditions relate to a completion of required improvements from previous land use decisions. Due to the tremendous public interest for this case, um, staff has been receiving and accepting public comments, uh, both before and after required comment periods. Um, staff has also, um, made available on our website, uh, the applicant's middle items, including development plans and traffic impact analysis, uh, for easy access by the public. Uh, Morningside Neighborhood Association and South Gateway Neighborhood Association have written, or have submitted written testimony, and on November seventh, notice of appeals were received from the South Gateway Neighborhood Association and Carl Gianuda. Uh, the staff report to council addresses the issues raised by the appellants. And staff is recommending, uh, that the city council affirm the Planning Administrator's decision. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, we'll begin with the applicant. You'll have fifteen minutes.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
All right.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't have a name, or, so if you'll kind of fill me in on who everybody is and who you're with.
You want to get set up?
Yeah, I just get set up.
Okay. Let the technical side get going.
It's only IT, but people are...
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, city manager, council members and staff. My name is Dave Ramus. I'm a partner and chief operating officer at PAC Trust. My grandparents moved to Salem from North Dakota in the nineteen thirties. My parents were raised in Salem, and I was born here as well. I attended Oregon State University, now live in Portland, and have been up, associated with PAC Trust for the past thirty-three years. As you may know, in addition to the Kubler Gateway Center, PAC Trust is also developing industrial properties at the Mill Creek Project across I-5. The application before you tonight marks the culmination of over twelve years of work, investment, risk, and waiting. In December two thousand and seven, we received final zone change approval from the city council for the development of a community shopping center, which was the only allowed use on the property. Like everyone else, we endured a lengthy recession, after which the opportunities have changed for shopping center development. However, in spite of the recession, we worked closely with the city in making road improvements to the adjacent streets, including widening the eastbound lane of Kubler Boulevard from Commercial to I-5. Additionally, we invested with a Salem Clinic and an additional office building, medical office building. We have relied on the two thousand and seven city council approval in our decision to invest new capital in the project. To date, we have spent approximately three-point-seven million dollars in off-site improvements, and will spend another two-point-six million of required road improvements for a total of investment of approximately six-point-three million dollars to develop the shopping center. We have done everything the city has asked of us, and now we ask for your approval of this application to build a shopping center that was first approved by the council in two thousand and seven. Our entire development team is here tonight to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to continuing to grow our relationship with the city of Salem. I'd like to introduce Wendy Kellington, who is our land use attorney, and will detail the technical aspects of our application.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. Mr. Mayor, Wendy Kellington, representing PAC Trust. I have three issues I'd like to discuss with you. One is the well-established legal principle that issues that could have been raised or were raised and resolved in the two thousand and seven city council decision approving this property for this shopping center cannot be raised again now. Second, to briefly discuss particular issues, including to make sure that you understand that Kubler functions and has capacity because PAC Trust has created it as a part of the conditions that you required as a council in two thousand and seven, and an image that demonstrates those significant improvements to Kubler Road are on the image before you. PAC Trust has a vested right to the construction of the shopping center that this city approved in two thousand and seven. So first, to the legal principle about unlawful collateral attacks on the two thousand and seven city council decision, and how those are unlawful and why. The city council decided in two thousand and seven that the use of this site could only be for a shopping center, and decided the maximum size would be two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand square feet, and required PAC Trust to mitigate for all of the impacts of such a shopping center, and it did, as you can see. The council was so stringent that it made sure that that was the only use that could be made of this property. Understand, that is the only allowed use of this property. That decision finally and conclusively decided that a shopping center of two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand square feet or less is not a regional shopping center. It made that decision. It finally and conclusively decided that all impacts to the surrounding, uh, area transportation system, uh, would be completely mitigated for that shopping center based on the conditions of approval that the city council imposed and that PAC Trust has complied with. This finality principle is the only reason that PAC Trust has paid the city millions of dollars and is on the hook for millions more, and that is to develop the exact shopping center that we are talking about here today. Two particular issues. This proposal is for a retail shopping center, and Costco is a retail sales use. The site plan shows a retail shopping center with an anchor store, fueling, four retail pads, and understand, each of those retail pads will have multiple smaller stores on them. Two medical office buildings, and it all will function as an integrated whole. The smaller format stores are practically banging down Costco's door, not Costco's, PAC Trust's door, to become a part of the shopping center once the anchor tenant, Costco, is established. That is quintessentially a shopping center. A Costco store was always one of the options for the anchor tenant, as Exhibit Two to my letter to you that you received on November thirtieth makes clear. That is a list of all the possible stores that was provided to Cigna, the Neighborhood Association, at one of the six neighborhood meetings in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven, in response to a Cigna question that said, "What kind of stores can we expect?" And Costco's, uh, was figured prominently as one of the options that was provided in answer to the neighborhood. In addition, this image that is before you right now is one of the images on a PowerPoint presentation that PAC Trust provided to the council as part of the approval process, showing a blob of where a, a large format retail anchor would be, and where generally smaller stores would be located. With regard to traffic, some claim the shopping center will use up capacity on Kubler Road that's reserved for others. That is untrue and unfair. As you know, PAC Trust created the capacity on Kubler, and before PAC Trust, Kubler was failing. Without PAC Trust and the improvements it paid for and established, Kubler would be worse off. The capacity that PAC Trust provided was not a charitable contribution. It was for this exact shopping center. It made it possible for Kubler to work for everybody in this room. And now it's, now that it's done its part, it asks you to approve this technical review, which is its site plan, which talks about, has arranged its buildings in circulation With regard to the applicable approval standards, your staff has done a beautiful job of explaining why all of the standards that apply are completely met. I want to mention a couple. The standard about trees asks, "Is it necessary to remove the eight white oak trees to develop the shopping center?" Your professional staff confirms the answer is yes. It is impossible to establish the only permitted use of the site, a retail shopping center, and save them. And the city has uniformly interpreted the necessary-to-remove standard to be met in a situation like this. Understand, it is impossible, and that is impossible, to establish the shopping center of the size that the city fully approved in two thousand and seven, which is much larger than what's proposed here, and save those trees. They're right in the middle of that retail blob. That's where they are. Regardless, PAC Trust and Costco care about this issue, and even though they're only required to plant sixteen trees, they're proposing to plant fifty-four new, healthy white oak trees on the property at least two-inch caliper, and you are free to impose a condition of approval to that effect. With regard to access, the access standard that applies for, uh, site review, it's a microstandard. It, uh, looks to access to and from the site. It's not about a larger area. We've already done that. It's an evaluation of the traffic impacts. Uh, is access gonna be adequate in and out of the site? Does this, the parking lot work? Is the circulation adequate? And the, the evidence is uniform that the internal access, the driveway access, the microaccess, all of those standards are perfectly met. Your staff is right. The PAC Trust has met all standards. So finally, I want to say that PAC Trust has done its part. It's done everything you've asked it to do and more. It's earned and deserves your approval of its site plan, and with all due respect, we greatly ask that you do so, please. So, thank you. Questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I appreciate your, your comments. I have a couple of questions. I understand collateral attacks and how they're not appropriate, um, but nevertheless, having said that, you then go on to talk about the Kittleson Traffic Study, and in response, and also in the opponent's response to that study. Well, if it's your view that all that was established in two thousand and seven, why did you go ahead and do the Kittleson Study?
Thank you for that question.
You're welcome.
Um, that's the way PAC Trust does things. So, staff said, uh, when they were scoping the traffic impact analysis, they said, "We want you to confirm what you did before." And most developers I represent would push back and say, "Wait a minute, we already did that. We don't need to do that again." And when staff said, "We're kind of concerned about this Twenty-seventh Street access. We'd really like, you know, a million-dollar roundabout," most developers would say, "This has already been resolved. We're not gonna do it." The PAC Trust cooperates. It's the quintessential corporate citizen. It cooperates. Ask your staff anything that staff has... Anything that staff has ever asked PAC Trust to do, it has erred in favor of cooperating and do it. And so that's why it did the bigger traffic study and has agreed to do improvements. It probably legally and technically can't be required to do because it wants to get along.
So, it sounds like you're saying that this is, PAC Trust is a good corporate citizen, which is another argument to put on the side of, "We should allow this development."
Yes.
Okay. Is that in any code anywhere?
Well, I asked your question. I mean, with regard to the actual standards that apply, PAC Trust has met those, but it's done one better, right? It's when staff has said, "We'd really like you to do X or Y and Z," it said, "Sure, no problem. Ask them. They will tell you that."
Thank you. I do have other questions, but I'm happy to defer.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. So, now I'm wondering about the necessity with the trees. The way I kind of understand the statements in the report was that part of the reason it was necessary to build it there is it was believed that it would mitigate more to the neighbors, to the south, to have them looking at a 30-foot-high concrete brick wall than having them look at eight fully mature white oaks.
So, I don't think it's quite like that. So, as you can see in the image here, we've played with a lot of different site layouts. Before the larger, large-format anchor became available, PAC Trust looked at smaller kinds of format shopping centers, and even in that situation, these images are before you right now, even in that situation, there's simply no way to save the trees. We also, when PAC Trust and Costco were looking to put together a shopping center on the property, they tried a whole bunch of different arrangements for how Costco would be on the site, and there wasn't any arrangement to put Costco on the site and to provide the required and safe amount of parking and circulation and still meet the applicable standards. So, they've tried a bunch of things. We're going to bring up for you some of those other site plans that were looked at for Costco. So, here's one, and I think Matt will just run through them with you. We've tried everything we can think of, and there's simply no way to do it, but then because those trees have to be removed to have a shopping center anywhere near the size that the City Council required for this site, they're going to plant 54 trees to make up for those of two-inch caliper, and again, would look forward to a condition of approval to that effect.
One final question for now. I'd like, if you could, if you could comment a bit on the gas station versus fueling station, at least in my mind, a gas station is the Maunpa A&amp;P or AMPM that is at the corner of various intersections as opposed to a larger fueling station like Costco has. Do you see any difference between those two things? Because a fueling station would not be allowed in the zoning code we're talking about, but a gas station is.
So, that is not an issue that I'm familiar with, so I'm going to leave that to Jeff Tross, whom you know. Jeff, you want to come up here and answer that question, please?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you. So, just a point of clarification. You said a few times that Kubler, that PAC Trust created the capacity on Kubler. So, I just want to reiterate, there were no tax dollars. This was a private investment for the entirety from I-5 to Commercial, if I heard you correctly. So, when I drove past your tax dollars at work, or when there was a bond improving capacity on Kubler, my money went somewhere else. That was just a private investment based on your good faith and risk for developing a property? Am I understanding you right?
So, here's my understanding about it, and then there are other people who probably know a lot more about it than I do, but in order, this was a really expensive improvement to make, and the city was not able to do it until PAC Trust came along, and it really wanted it to happen. And even before the shopping center was able to open, as you know, the city asked PAC Trust to provide money and real property and things like that to make the improvement happen. It would not have happened. It was a public-private partnership improvement, but it would not have happened but for PAC Trust. And as I think we showed in our materials that we provided on the 30th, staff said, as a part of the 2007 approval process, that the system, the road system, will function better because PAC Trust has been able to provide those important financial nectices in order to enable it to happen.
Counsel Lewis?
No, I'm fine, thanks.
What'd you say? I just didn't hear you. I'm sorry. You're fine?
Yeah, I'm fine.
You're okay. Okay. Counsel Hoyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. You used the phrase several times during your presentation, "shopping center," and I'm wondering if there is a standard, an industry standard definition of that term, shopping center, that phrase? And if so, what is it?
So, I don't know if there's an industry, and there's probably an industry one for everybody, but the city code has a definition about, you know, an arrangement of, you know, predominantly retail stores or something like that that functions as an integrated whole. And even though that definition did not exist in 2007 when this shopping center was approved, it exists now, and the shopping center that's proposed is consistent with it, so we've been kind of using that as the touchstone.
Yes, Counsel.
Are you familiar with the Urban Land Institute and their definition of a shopping center?
I am. We went through that in the 2007 processes, and that, I think the processes there were looking at, would the shopping center that Costco, why do I want to say Costco? PAC Trust, sorry. PAC Trust was proposing be one that would be a prohibited regional center, or would it be the next level down, which is a community center? And some folks were talking about the ULI definition of a shopping center, and other folks talked about other sorts of definitions. PAC Trust relied upon a definition in a City Council 1987 resolution about the, kind of the bogey for a regional shopping center being a square footage, 300,000 square feet. And so, the City Council considered all of that testimony and made a decision that a shopping center on this property that was composed of less than 300,000 square feet would be a community level, which is the next level down, community-level shopping center, not a regional shopping center, and rejected those other sorts of definitions because, I don't know, it wanted to rely on a resolution that it had already adopted. I think the City Council had adopted.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel Anderson?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
We have three pages of witnesses here that are waiting on.
I'll be very quick. If this proposal is granted, will the Costco omission be closed?
Yes.
And what is the square footage of the Costco omission?
Anybody know?
I could take that later, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
But it will be, you know, repurposed. There's lots of people who are very, very interested in it. It's kind of a big deal, so.
Very good. Thank you.
143,000 square feet, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Have we hit 15 for these guys yet? Who's counting?
I stopped timing once the question started, Mayor.
Okay. The appellant, number one, who is...
Did you have one more question, Tom?
Yeah.
There was a question, Mr. Mayor, that Mr. Tross was going to answer, I thought.
I misunderstood. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. Jeff Tross, land use consultant here on behalf of PAC Trust, 1720 Liberty Street, southeast Salem, 97302. I'd like to answer Counsel Anderson's question about a gas station versus fuel station. City Code makes no distinction. It uses the term "gas station" or "service station," but there's no distinction, and essentially, it's the same thing. I think the closest example to what your question involves is the new Fred Meyer gas station or fuel station on the corner of Commercial and Madrona. I believe it has 20 pumps. There are no other services. It's not a repair garage. It's not a car wash. It's simply a fuel station, and it's also in the CR zone, which is the same zone that we have here. So, it's a good example. Counsel Hoyer had a question about what is a shopping center. May I answer that as well? Thank you. Well, first, the term "shopping center," as Ms. Kellington just referred to, is defined in city code. It's SRC 400.045, and it's a very simple definition when it says, "A group of businesses falling primarily under the retail, sales, and service use category that form a centralized unit, have a joint parking area available for use by patrons of any single business." And that's certainly the case here, where you have the parking area located centrally to the anchor tenant and the smaller buildings located along the perimeter. It's also important to keep in mind that the two medical office buildings are part of the shopping center. It was always intended to be that way. It was referred to that way during the 2007 proceedings that resulted in council approval. And some further information, I think, which addresses your ULI question, is provided by a letter that was submitted by PAC Trust during those 2007 proceedings. The letter was written by Dick Lawfulmaker, who at that time was the project maker, project manager for PAC Trust, in which he stated that a community shopping center ranges in size from about 150,000 to 400,000 square feet. And at that time, the proposal here was for 200,000 square feet of retail, which is consistent with that. And as Ms. Kellington related, there was a lot of discussion about what ULI said at that time, and those figures that are in Mr. Lawfulmaker's letter are consistent with the ULI data from that time. That time is important. I would also just like to add, if I may, if time allows, that, as you heard Mr. Ramus say, not only is this the accumulation of all the prior approvals, this is a continuous project. This application before you tonight does not exist in its own vacuum. It is the product of multiple land use approvals. I myself have been involved with land use approvals on this property since the mid-1990s, beginning with what is now Salem Clinic. When Salem Clinic owned the Westerly 10 acres of this property, they applied for rezoning so that they could build their future clinic, which currently exists as a result of their partnership with PAC Trust. After that, there was the 2006 approval for the larger property, and I should add that amid all this was a study that the city commissioned in the mid-to-late 1990s by Campion Associates, a land use and transportation planning firm from Portland, which was entitled "The Kubler Interchange Land Use Management Study." And the purpose of that study was to review future uses around this interchange, and this property, among others, was designated, at least in part at that time, for commercial use, and part of it was also intended for high-density residential, which, as we know today, in the RM2 zone is up to 28 units per acre. Be that as it may, the 2007 approval built upon the results of the city's study by Campion Associates, recognizing this interchange and the area around it as a future location for commercial development, not the least reason of which is the property's major front is along a parkway, which is, of course, the highest classification of street in the city transportation plan. So, with that as some context from 1990 on, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Okay. The appellant is the neighborhood group. First appellate, number one. I'm not sure who's, Glenn, are you representing them? Glenn, you have 10 minutes.
Mayor Bennett, City Council members, thank you. The South Gateway Neighborhood.
Your name and who you represent.
Sorry.
That's okay.
My name's Glenn Bailey. I'm the chair of the South Gateway Neighborhood Association. I live at 1347 Spyglass Court here in South Salem. The Neighborhood, South Gateway Neighborhood Association is appealing the decision before you today because we feel that the applicant has not met the required criteria to warrant approval and that what they're proposing in no way matches what was promised during the rezone approval. Our appeal is based on a number of reasons. The key issue here, as I mentioned, is that what was promised is not what's being proposed. The property was rezoned in 2007 as a community retail shopping center, based on PAC Trust's numerous assertions to citizens and the City Council that a neighborhood shopping center would be developed to serve surrounding neighborhoods. However, what you have before you today is a massive warehouse and a 30-pump industrial fueling station that will draw customers from Marion and Polk Counties. Another Cigna member is going to go over some of these assertions, but I just wanted to highlight several because I think they're important. Jeffrey Tross, who just spoke here, representing PAC Trust, stated before the planning commission that the project is a community-level, commercial, retail, and service center as it is intended to serve a surrounding area that consists of several neighborhoods. Mr. Tross referred to the Salem Comprehensive Plan definition of community and neighborhood-level commercial facilities and defined them as serving both neighborhood residents as well as residents of a market area, again, as we stated earlier, comprised of several neighborhoods. What you have here before you today is a 168,000-square-foot warehouse that's going to draw people not only from the several neighborhoods, but from around the whole region. Eric Spory with PAC Trust stated at the planning commission also that we are not doing a Walmart on this site. The existing Walmart on South Commercial is around 130,000 square feet, and what you again have here is 168,000-square-foot warehouse. Basically, PAC Trust now expects you to ignore these assurances and to allow them to build a massive warehouse and a 30-pump industrial fueling station. Next issue that we have is with traffic impact. We believe that the traffic generated from this project will overwhelm the area's traffic infrastructure and impact residents through congestion, safety issues, and cut through traffic. These negative impacts were not adequately covered in the project's TIA, in our opinion, which we believe had flawed assumptions and methodology. Here are a few issues we identified. The TIA consultant used a custom study without providing the data or methodology for traffic engineers or even citizens' verification of its soundness. The TIA did not include traffic resulting from all potential development affecting the project area of particular note is actually Mill Creek Corporate Center and the Amazon facility opening in 2019. The TIA also did not include all the potential intersections that could be affected by the project or potential infiltration, i.e., cut through traffic to the surrounding neighborhoods. These are only a few of the issues we identified, and we request that the report from Greenlight Engineering, which Mr. Anuda will be discussing, be entered into the record and reviewed. Another area that we had concerns with was stormwater. As we all know, stormwater runoff and flooding are a constant issue that affects Salem. However, the decision on this application said that the proposal should be subject to pre-2014 stormwater requirements, which are more lax than the current standards, because a stormwater plan was submitted with a subdivision request prior to the enactment of the current standards. However, the subdivision request only applied to 7.95 acres of the western half of the property and did not include the eastern half of the property where Costco, where the Costco Building, Industrial Fueling Depot are to be located. John Shepherd will speak on some of the issues in regards to the actual system that's being proposed, but let me just say that the applicant's engineering design is an attempt to use a static system to address the dynamic problem of rainfall that changes in time and volume. Tree retention is also a concern of ours. The proposal calls for the removal of a grove of trees, including 11 Oregon white oak trees on the site, which are significant and likely qualify for listing as heritage trees. It is our contention that the applicant failed to consider all the necessary alternative site plans for preserving the Oregon white oaks that would have justified removal under Salem Code. We believe that an appropriately-sized, community-retail shopping center, rather than an enormous warehouse and fueling depot that was proposed, would enable PAC Trust and Salem to retain the Oregon white oaks as a community asset. Lastly, public involvement. As a representative of the community surrounding the PAC Trust property, Cigna has also based its public comments and actions on community response, as citizen involvement is goal one of the Oregon land use laws. We found that... We found that the vast majority of community residents are opposed to the Costco relocation and also feel that the applicant has not adequately engaged the public in the planning process for this proposal. A few examples. We held a-- Cigna held a meeting on June 5, 2018, attended by over 175 people, on commercial development at Kubler and also the Costco relocation. Attendees for the greatest majority were opposed to the Costco relocation. Second, on June 19, PAC Trust and Costco representatives held an open house regarding the project that included poster board stations, but with no presentation or opportunity for public engagement regarding the project. PAC Trust Costco representatives never made a formal presentation at the South Gateway Neighborhood Association regarding the site plan review. Due to all these concerns, our recommendation is that the council should reject the planning administrator's decision on the proposal in its present form and send it back to staff with instructions to follow up on and answer the many questions and issues that have been raised. The applicant should also be instructed to rethink their position and submit a proposal that accurately reflects a community-retail shopping center that was the basis for the rezone approval. Barring that, the council should continue this matter for another hearing in January so you have time to carefully review the proverbial mountain of material that has been submitted in this matter in the last 30 or so days. Let me just say, we are not opposed to Costco moving to South Salem, nor are we opposed to development on the PAC Trust site. Actually, we support the development of the neighborhood shopping center that was promised in the rezone approval. Unfortunately, the decision you have before you today is not a neighborhood shopping center. Basically, the applicant with city approval seems to be attempting to park a semi-truck into a compact car space. Approving this decision sends the message that assurances from the city and developers to the community are meaningless and bait-and-switch tactics are acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask you. That is, I expect that's the last time you'll do that, okay? Or we'll just close the hearing. I'm not going to put up with a lot of noise on this thing, okay? I know there's a lot of opposition and support. My iPad's full. Who's the other appellant on this thing? And I really do mean that. I will shut this down. Okay? Who's the next appellant?
I think that would be me. Is this a touchscreen?
And you have 10 minutes when you get ready.
Oh, thank you. Can we figure out how to make that come up? That's not going to work. While they're working, while I'm trying to work out the--
Why don't you tell us who you are?
--difficulties. My name is Carl Anuta. I'm a lawyer representing John Miller, Laura Meisner, and Bill Dalton, three residents of Salem. I have given the recorder a flash drive with the materials that I'm hoping to show you here in a moment, once we work out the technical issues, and 27 pages, single-spaced, of additional testimony, which I promise I will not go through in its entirety tonight. I will try to summarize--
You can talk real fast and do it, I guess.
The-- trying to access that flash drive. Yeah, there's a series of PDFs that I need to put on the screen. That would be wonderful. First, let me remind the members of the council and the mayor, the standard review here is that PAC Trust has to convince you that they've met every criteria in the code, in the comp plan, and in this council's rules. It's their burden as the applicant. Then, the second thing is, I think we should talk about, and once we get the visuals up, I'll have a better chance for you, talk about what was approved by the council. Because what was approved was very clear. It was described as a community neighborhood shopping center, and that was put in the decision, and it even references, and if we can get those up, I'll show-- I have the quotes pulled out from the decisions that I'd be happy to show you. They're also in my written materials. This council said they were relying on PAC Trust's representations about what would be built. And what they represented would be built was a community neighborhood shopping center like a Renko Station up in Portland-Beverton area. It is not a huge big box. It is not a huge fueling depot. It is a neighborhood store area with small shops and one anchor tenant. In that particular case-- Do we have any luck on the technical stuff there? Okay. The-- in that particular case, happens to be a new season store, which has about a 45,000, maybe, probably more, like 33,000 square foot footprint. That's what they represented to this council repeatedly, and that's what this council based its decision on. And when you're told you've got to approve what we ask, you probably need to sit back and say, "Well, what have we approved?" Because that's what we need to approve, not what you want now. Let's talk about the details of what they're proposing for you. Any luck?
It's a exhibit, you just know the best stuff there, bottom left. And then that one is one of their--
That one looks like my testimony, and I will try to get you the rest of the nice visuals that I put together, all of which are in the materials. There we go. All right, so, first off, let's talk about, I said what, and Mr. Glenn also referenced, what was actually represented. We have pulled the recordings from the planning commission hearings and from the city council hearings, and they're all on the materials I've given you in Exhibit 2. There's actual recordings, and then Exhibit 3 and Exhibit 4 are transcripts of those And if Adobe would stop trying to give me a tour. Here's what you actually said. You said that there would be a factory, there would not be a factory outlet mall, and that you were going to do a community-level shopping service facility. You said in your decision that it was as described, a community-level retail service center as described in the applicant's submittals. And that's also what the PAC Trust people represented to you. They said over and over again, "It's a community center, not a big box. It's brick and mortar, like our Renko Station site." And that's what the city staff told you. They understood, a community shopping center. They're not going to be asking you for something that includes gasoline service stations. Quote, "PAC Trust proposal is proposing none of those." That's funny. It looks a lot to me like they're proposing a huge fueling station. They also talked about how they're not going to have something that's going to draw for 10 miles. A Costco that's not going to draw for 10 miles? I think that's hard to accept. Now, let's talk about what they actually presented for you. This drawing, which you saw a little bit earlier, that is not a big box. That is a community-level store. You were also told that there is no other option. We must put this big box here, or it will, there's no other way to save the oaks. That's an interesting claim, since this is from their materials. Those are the oaks. They're saved, even with a big box. Another one. Even with a big box. Imagine what these incredibly creative, professional people could do if they actually tried to propose to you what they said they would and what you actually proposed, which was a community level, not a big box. There'd be lots of design options. Other things I want to make sure that I cover, we talked about a Renko for just a moment. That's what that looks like. That's the a Renko Station. It does not have a fueling station. It does not have a big-box store. It has a new season store vastly smaller than what's being proposed here. Ms. Kellington told you that all the land use stuff was fully resolved in the rezone, and PAC Trust was doing this additional traffic study just because they were good people. PAC Trust is doing the study because that's what your code requires. That's what your staff will tell you. The code requires them to do a traffic study at each level. Ms. Kellington's letter goes on at length about the Suporin case and what that means. I've detailed why that doesn't apply. In this instance, that was a case where the code was in conflict, and the city council had to resolve the conflict and said, "Okay, we're going to put all the traffic in the planning commission's rezone stage and none of it at the site plan stage." You don't have a conflict in your code, and you have a specific clear code that says you've got to do a TIA at the site plan level. That's what they did. PAC Trust knows that. They wouldn't have spent the money on a site plan, TIA, if they didn't think they needed to. Scope of the TIA is completely out of where we think it should be. I've given you a lengthy, 17-plus pages detailed engineering report that goes through and lists all the problems with the TIA. Some of the critical problems that you need to be thinking about are lack of transparency. They're basing it on data that they say that Costco gave them that no one has seen. I asked the city engineer, Mr. Martin, if he had seen the data. He was very honest. He said, "I've seen a summary." He hasn't seen the data. ODOT asked for the data. ODOT didn't get the data. Nobody's seen the data. Now, this may come as a shock to some of you that are not very cynical, like some of us. People can say things with statistics that aren't necessarily accurate. And the only way to prevent that is to have everybody have the same statistics so you can look at, what do they really say? Kittleson has not come forward with the data that they're basing their traffic analysis on. If the data really shows what they claim it shows, then they should give it to the city and to ODOT and to us and make it available so people can see, "Does it say that, or is there something else going on here?" All right, so let's talk about the, we already covered a little bit. This Costco is, and I, there's an insane amount of detail in this green light report that I urge you to read in detail. There are numerous substantive errors in the traffic analysis. The one that really surprised me the most is they analyzed the wrong intersection at Kubler. They thought they analyzed one with three lanes when there isn't three lanes. They analyzed one at I-5 with an island in it, when that island and a right-turn curve lane, there's no right-turn curve lane with an island separating it. That makes a difference in traffic analysis. You have to do it right. I'm running short on time here. I will skip through this. I will also urge you to look closely at all of the materials we've submitted, and I'll point out that we're not collaterally attacking the other decision. We're just asking that PAC Trust does what it promised to do. Saving these oaks and putting a community-level store here would be a feather in their cap, like a Renko. If you go to their website, it goes on at length about what a great project a Renko is, and it is a great project. And this could be too, if they did what they promised that they would do. I will close by noting that, in addition to the vast amount of material that I've submitted to you now, the staff report came out a week ago with 1,395 pages of material.
Okay, time's up. Thank you.
I would urge you to provide--
Yeah, councillor, go ahead.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer questions.
The green light report, you submitted that, you are submitting it now?
Correct. We submitted a summary of traffic issues, which includes--
I've seen those, yeah.
--all of those in our appeal notice, but we didn't have at that time an actual engineering report.
So you're showing us the data now, as opposed to before, because you just got it now?
Correct. Unlike Kittleson, who has the data but hasn't shown it to anybody.
So then I, I, two things I'd like you to talk about. One is the collateral estoppel, well, I'm sorry, I'm talking like a lawyer now, the collateral attack issue.
That's okay.
A little more detail to that. And then, the, address the issue a little bit in more detail, as did they have to do this traffic study, or did they not have to do the traffic study as part of their current application?
Okay. I'm happy to answer both those. On the collateral attack issue, we're not collaterally attacking the rezone. My clients are, have come to grips with the fact that there is going to be a shopping center there. They welcome a shopping center, as promised, just not the one that's now been proposed as the only option that you might get. So we're not collaterally attacking anything. The rezone decision was made. It is rezoned. It is commercial. What is being attacked now is the proposed site plan that has been presented that says the only option is a big box. That's what we're challenging, not the prior decision. On the issue of did they have to do a traffic analysis, your code says in the site plan section that they need to do a traffic analysis. That's very different from what was going on in Suporin, in the Medford case, where the code had a conflict in it about where that was supposed to be done, whether it was at the planning commission rezone level or at the site plan level. And the city council there said, and in my materials, I've given you the precise sites to the pages in Suporin that say this. There, the city council said, "We've got to resolve this dispute. We'll decide that we only do those on rezones." Here, your staff will tell you, the city code has always been interpreted to require a traffic impact analysis at the site plan level, in addition to one at the rezone level. And the suggestion that you got, that the one here only has to look at internal systems of the traffic, isn't consistent with the code, which says you have to look at the transportation system and the negative impacts to the transportation system. Those words make no sense if the only thing you're looking at is internal to the development, because you don't have a transportation system internal. You have driveways and circulation. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you very much. Jim West. Jim West will be followed by Roger Harris, followed by Ray Quizenberry, and I'd ask you to just start lining up. We're going to move this along. You each have three minutes. Please stop when the red light comes on. Be aware when the yellow light comes up. You have one minute left.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Jim West. I live at 808 Hazeltine Avenue in Salem. I am a registered professional engineer, and during my professional career, I've worked on more than 40 projects that are pretty much just like this, some for Costco and some for Costco's competitors. But tonight, I'm not representing a particular company or a group, and so my remarks are made, are being made as a private citizen. According to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, a project of this size for the Costco alone would generate approximately 7,000 new trips to and from the site every day, plus the trips for the outbuildings, plus the trips for the fuel stations. Some of those people will stop as they drive by the Costco, but the majority of those trips will be new, which will create congestion at the surrounding intersections, including Battle Creek and Boone Road. Now, I'm not here tonight to suggest an alternative location. I know how difficult it is to actually pick a site for a Costco, which I believe is a good corporate company, although some of the things I've heard tonight are pretty compelling. But what I am asking is that you take another look at the conditions of approval, particularly for the intersection of Battle Creek and Boone Road intersection. It's proposed that a traffic signal be installed there, but that traffic signal is very close to the intersection at Battle Creek and Kubler. And when you put two traffic signals right next to each other, they oftentimes work in conflict and will back out traffic out onto the main arterial. It's generally not a good location to have them there. My suggestion would be that the council take another look at the conditions of approval and consider requiring the applicant to install a roundabout there, which would not back traffic out onto Kubler Avenue. Now, you may be reluctant to do this, but you get one shot at asking for all the right things, and if you pass that up, it will be gone. I remind you of the bridge that-- I remind you of the bridge that Creekside was going to get almost twenty years ago, that the developer did not build that bridge and the costs for that bridge have now been passed on to the city, millions of dollars the city will have to pay that could be used for somewhere else. Now is your chance to ask for all the right things, so I recommend that you do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Roger Harris, followed by Ray Quisenberry, followed by Bill Worcester.
Thank you, Roger Harris.
Yes, thank you.
5920 Summerside Street Southeast. I'm here just representing myself and my wife as interested residents. With the expansive development of residential areas, it only makes sense that we also have business and shopping opportunities moving into the area. I can't address the technical aspects of street lights and lane changes and things like that, but I just want to say we are in favor of having this store in the area, so we favor the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Ray Quisenberry, followed by Bill Worcester.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to give my testimony out, but I'll let the neighbors in the area --
Bill Worcester. Thank you, Ray. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. Bill Worcester, 1935 Wickshire Avenue Southeast. I believe the Kittleson traffic impact analysis for the proposed Costco relocation underestimates trip generation by as much as 18 percent. I based this on TIAs for six other Costcos and two Walmarts that I was able to find TIAs for. And four of those six Costcos were done by Kittleson and Associates. From each of those TIAs, I pulled three basic numbers. The store size, square footage, 168,550 for Costco. The weekday net PM peak hour trips, which Costco or Kittleson says would be 701 weekday peak hour trips. And then the daily net new trips, which they say would be 7,210 new trips. From those numbers, I calculated two ratios, and I've got an attached spreadsheet. I don't know if you've seen my testimony, but I submitted it to your staff. Basically, the net new trips versus weekday peak hour trips. In other words, how many daily trips does a peak hour trip generate? And the weekday net PM peak hour trips per thousand square feet of store area. So Kittleson's estimated daily net new trips of 7210, that comes out to 10.3 trips per peak hour trip. The eight other studies average 12.2 daily trips per peak hour trip. So if you apply the 12.2 to Costco's 701, you get 8,552 trips per day, which is 1,342 trips more than what Kittleson is projecting. So that's a 16 percent shortfall by Kittleson. Looking at it slightly differently, the net daily trip estimate is 43 trips per thousand square feet. The eight other studies average 52 trips per thousand square feet. So I'm going to run short of time. I can see that. Anyway, basically, you can see my testimony later on, I guess, to sort of see my math. I believe the TIA does not address the potential for increased cut-through traffic in South Gateway and the Morningside neighborhoods due to increased congestion on Kubler and Battle Creek. Wickshire Avenue where I live is already a popular thoroughfare for when traffic's backed up on Kubler. TIA does not address South Morningside's access to Battle Creek. We have about five or six intersections onto Battle Creek where a site distance is very limited by hills or curves. And finally, the TIA takes a piecemeal approach to looking only at Costco and not at the overall development, including things going on outside the immediate areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Claudia Hagador, Karen Lewis, Michael Slater. Claudia -- Karen Lewis? Okay, Michael Slater. Where's Karen? You're Karen?
No, I'm Claudia.
Okay.
My sister is Karen, but she doesn't live here.
But she's not here?
No, she's not here. I'm in the Cambridge neighborhood on my way here. I barely made it onto Battle Creek, and that's with all the current improvements. Apparently, we have a ways to go if we're going to build something this large. The other factor in our neighborhood, and I believe the previous gentleman just discussed it, is the traffic that goes through the neighborhood. Our street, Southampton, is like a shortcut from commercial. People go down Boone, and there must be like three sections or four sections of Boone, go down Boone, and then they either go right or left, right in front of our house. And when I was waiting for a friend to pick me up today, probably 20 cars went by my house in a nice little neighborhood in maybe five to 10 minutes. So I think all of that big map and everything only addresses the big -- just the area where the shopping center is and the feeder streets right around it. What no one seems to be taking into consideration so far, other than the people that have been talking to you previous to me, is the impact and you mentioned livability of a neighborhood. Our livability in our neighborhood is already impacted by people cutting through from the section of Boone Road that goes through our neighborhood in the Cambridge area. We have tried various things, thought about various things to cut down on that cut-through traffic, and it hasn't worked so far. So when we're looking at thousands of people coming to the area, going down Battle Creek, it will affect Battle Creek, all of the neighborhoods on Battle Creek, probably Leslie Middle School and the things that are on that section, which is called Pringle. And just the buses coming down Kubler in the morning, it's already bumper to bumper. And it's just going to be worse if we continue this idea.
Great. Thank you very much. Karen Lewis. Michael Slater.
All right. Good evening. My name is Michael Slater. I'm a twelve-year resident of Ward Seven. I'm also the land use chair of the Fayright Neighborhood Association. One of the questions the council needs to decide today is what the meaning of necessary is and whether the staff properly decided that it was necessary to remove the Oregon White Oaks. I would submit that necessary in this case deserves its plain language meaning, which is without alternative, and is not instead a wink and a nudge to developers, meaning lowest cost, most convenient, or something similar. A few facts. SRC 808 is the preservation of trees and vegetation chapter of the city's development code. Its purpose, among other things, is to provide protection for significant trees. The definition of significant trees includes Oregon White Oaks with a diameter at breast height of 24 inches or greater. As you know, there are eight Oregon White Oaks that meet this definition and therefore are covered by SRC 808. The applicant's preferred alternative, but not only alternative, calls for the removal of these oaks. The planning administrator approved the tree's removal based on exemption in 808A2L that reads, "Where the removal is necessary in connection with the construction of a commercial or industrial facility." It's important to note a few things. This is a tree preservation chapter. Its intent is to protect trees from development. You should interpret the chapter's language with that intent in mind. The Oregon White Oak is also the only tree the council specifically calls out in its tree preservation ordinance. Clearly, the council intended that the White Oaks deserve some special attention. The council, when they passed this chapter, could have simply exempted commercial construction instead of conditioning it with the "when necessary" phrase. For example, they could have written, "Where the removal facilitates construction," but they didn't. They chose to condition it with "necessary." They also could have defined or modified "necessary." For example, the council could have written, "The removal is necessary to save costs, necessary to maximize profit, or even necessary to minimize undesirable impacts." But they didn't. Necessary stands alone. Since 808 was enacted, neither the city council nor the city have issued any guidance that would modify necessary. To justify her approval, the planning administrator has invented an unwritten, undisclosed, and unsupported balancing test. The staff report states several factors were taken into consideration, but there is no criteria, no rationale, and no authority to create such a test. Moreover, the staff report indicates that the applicants themselves made the determination it was necessary, and the staff shows no evidence of evaluating or exercising any independent judgment when they made that decision. Given the applicant has alternative site plans that preserve the White Oaks, the fact that necessary stands on its own, unmodified and without guidance, the fact that the planning administrator approved the removal based on an invented and unsupported balancing test --
Michael, time's up.
And the fact that the applicant themselves have made the determination of necessary, the council ought to deny the application.
Come back again sometime. Yeah, Trevor Phillips. Anna Peterson and Dan Reed.
Hello, my name is Trevor Phillips. Thank you, Mayor Bennett and City Counselor, for hearing us. I'm here to speak in support of the South Gateway Neighborhood Association's appeal. And I'd like to ask the council and the city to oppose or ask for a review of this specific site plan. In my opinion, this is about traffic, trees, and inadequate infrastructure. Specifically, my house has been shown a couple times on a few of these satellite maps by PAC Trust and by the city of Salem. I live about a half mile or less from the proposed site, and I work at the Salem Hospital. So my way to and from work is Battle Creek. I'm deeply concerned that the traffic this will generate by having potentially 7,000 new visits per day, seven days a week, could impact. It does take longer and longer to get onto Battle Creek from the Cambridge neighborhood. I think that this is a bigger project than was proposed, you know, back in 2007. A lot of things changed. I've moved here since then. I've been here about ten and a half years, and I've seen the growth of population and traffic use, and it's taken me longer and longer to get onto Battle Creek. This is just the beginning of what could be, you know, a proposal with three different phases that'll be about twice the size of Woodburn. I'm concerned that this has got probably about 1,000 new parking spaces associated with it and 3,000 when all three phases beyond the new Costco are put in place. I think that our exit 252 will be overwhelmed. Given that this will be twice the size of Woodburn, exit 252 is nowhere near designed like it is in Woodburn to handle that. I don't agree with the TIA as submitted. I would also request that we get their data and review that more closely. I think it's flawed and inaccurate. And then beyond the traffic and inadequate infrastructure, I'd like to speak a bit more about the trees. I mean, I'm staring right at the, you know, Tree City USA Arbor Day Foundation on our wall, and as a healthcare provider, I mean, I can remember back in medical school when they talked about the building of new hospitals, how they showed that if you had hospital rooms that faced, like, had a window that faced trees, people's time to discharge was less and they had better outcomes. So I just disagree that it's necessary to remove these trees. I mean, I think it's good to replant, but it's different to put two-inch trees versus, you know, the established grove that's already there. So I appreciate your time, and I hope they would reconsider the specific site plan. I'm in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Peterson, followed by Dan Reed, followed by Andrea from Genesis Street. I apologize, Andrea, I can't read your handwriting. Going to skip it? Okay. Thanks, Anna.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Bennett, members of the Salem City Council. I'm Anna Peterson. I live at 471 High Street Southeast in Salem, 97301. I appreciate this opportunity to come and talk with you tonight. I want to talk about three things: integrity, certainty, and honesty. These are things that the community looks to the city for. They are bedrock to this city. As they pertain to the decision you have in front of you regarding the planning decision on the Kubler property, integrity in the land use process is vital. The decisions that have been made over time in a transparent and orderly process and agreed to by this city became the roadmap and became the guide, which all people could follow. By upholding these plans and decisions, the city will provide certainty. Individuals, businesses, and investors rely on certainty as they locate their homes, their families, as they make investment, as they open their businesses. Certainty allows harmony as we live in a complex urban environment. The community looks to the city for honesty. Honesty to everyone, to the residents, to the businesses, to the investors. Upholding the legally determined zoning and transportation plans, those that have all been agreed to, rather than swaying to the winds of popular voices on a specific issue, will ensure that Salem will always be remembered in the long run for honesty in its decision-making process and honesty in its evolution. Salem will continue to grow. There's no doubt about that. Your decision on this matter will determine if it grows on the bedrock of integrity, certainty, and honesty, rather than on the shifting sands of a popular choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Any questions? Dan Reed, followed by Jeff Olson.
Dan Reed, Ward Three. A comparison of actual trip numbers for westbound traffic at the Kubler-Battle Creek intersection for the years 2007 and 2018 shows an annual growth rate of 4.5 percent. That's four and a half times the 1 percent rate Kittleson forecast in its TIA. Furthermore, the TIA states this purported growth rate is consistent with other traffic studies in the area. What are these studies? Who did them? When were they conducted? And importantly, who paid for them? For this same traffic, same location, for the year 2025, Kittleson forecasts an increase of eight trips per day, seven years hence. If Kittleson can apply a traffic growth rate of 1 percent when it's actually four times that, how can it be trusted to calculate an accurate Costco trip generation rate? PAC Trust paid, I think, 1.3 or 1.5 million to widen Kubler between Commercial and Battle Creek. They didn't do this out of the goodness of their heart. They bought a write-in access to the property off Kubler. It was a separate agreement from the rezone, and it destroyed integrity of the Salem -- of the Kubler Parkway system. As congestion on Kubler continues to build, drivers seek alternate routes. In other words, cut-through traffic through neighborhoods increases. Even PAC Trust recognizes this problem. In its applicant statement of 2006, one reads, "The increased vehicle traffic can be expected to infiltrate through the newly developing residential areas to the west of Battle Creek. I and my neighbors experienced this. We live on Cut Through Alley. Three months ago, during one short visit, a police officer issued six citations for drivers ignoring the stop signs at my intersection. And that was on a slow day. I am --" Several years ago, during a traffic count, a vehicle was clocked doing over 50 miles per hour on Wickshire. Should you uphold this appeal, Costco will simply find another location and life will continue. Should you deny it, thousands of South Salem residents will face adversity for decades. You may think a Costco on Kubler would be convenient, but I submit you have no concept of the traffic consequences. The longer your drive on Kubler, the greater will be your delay. There is no alternative to Kubler. Much of it can never be widened, and no supplemental route is planned. PAC Trust may contend the rezone permits a retail facility, and yes, that's what Costco is. However, there was never any need for PAC Trust to insist this would be a neighborhood shopping facility. This was done with the obvious intent of influencing decision-makers. In its absence, the rezone request might have been denied. I suggest PAC -- council does PAC Trust a favor. Since PAC Trust adamantly professed it was seeking a neighborhood shopping facility, deny the application.
Thank you, Dan.
Then PAC Trust won't have to contend with a contentious regional facility.
Thank you, Dan. And a -- Thank you, Dan. Any questions? Okay, Jeff Olson, followed by Bren Mannick.
Hi, I'm Jeff Olson. I'm with Commercial Realty Advisors in Portland. I'm a Oregon native, and our company works exclusively with retailers throughout the state, helping them find locations, and also work with shopping center owners to help them find retailers for those sites. We've worked with PAC Trust on the leasing of the subject's site. The question about the definition of a shopping center, that's all I do all day long is work with retailers. And I can tell you, in today's world of retail, which has changed immensely over the past decade, that you won't find any retailers in the industry that wouldn't describe what's drawn up right now as a shopping center. And truly, what is driving where the retailers are making their decisions is really what consumers are looking for. And so, you know, whether it's Costco looking to make adjustments based off of what their shoppers are demanding of them, when I'm working with retailers and looking for spaces for them, their decisions on where to invest and locate stores is based really on where their shoppers want them to be. And they're looking to locate in areas that are convenient for the public, they're looking to locate in areas where they're adjacent to other retailers that are relevant to folks that are shopping. We're all busy. A lot of the retailers, frankly, that were around when this approval was granted don't even exist anymore. And the folks that have adapted and adjusted to everybody's current lifestyles are the ones that, you know, are continuing to thrive and be successful in this market. I would argue that the utility of a retailer like Costco is actually more conducive for a neighborhood shopping center than a lot of other boxes that might be of comparable size or smaller simply because of their hours of operation. You've got a lot of retailers that are open 24 hours. There was a comment about gas stations, which, again, a lot of those are open 24 hours. Costco's is a fueling facility that's simply an amenity to their shoppers. So I think that when you look at the definition of what retailers are looking for today, that's exactly what PAC Trust has designed here. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Councilor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are shopping centers generally open to the public?
Yes.
Yes? Is Costco generally open to the public?
Yeah, you know, retailers, no, I'm happy to explain if you'd like an answer.
I would love that, yes.
But I mean, your retail concepts, you know, I mean, you've got movie theaters in shopping centers, you have to pay to go into those. You have athletic clubs in shopping centers, you have to pay to go into those. You know, you've got a lot of different types of retailing strategies. You know, from my perspective, you know, you've got Costco, which, you know, they've got a membership strategy, which, you know, and then in return, they work to offer their customers lower prices on a consistent basis, which you've got with some other competitors in other arenas, is you've got, say, like a Safeway or an Albertsons has a, like a high-low pricing strategy where you have to, you know, basically chase the weekly specials to try and get, you know, whatever the best deals are. So, you know, I think that, you know, there's different ways that retailers choose to go about servicing their customers, but by every definition, they're a retailer.
Yep. Okay, let's take a minute here. We're not going to talk off to the side here.
Yeah.
Okay, you got any more questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Bren Mannick.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm speaking just as a citizen and a Salem resident. My husband and I are native Oregonians. I live at 4196 Bluff Avenue Southeast, which is not that far from the proposed location of the new shopping center. I, we utilize Kringle and Kubler Road often. And I'm here to say that my husband and I both support having Costco in the neighborhood and realizing that it might increase the traffic. And so I'm urging you to vote affirmative on this plan. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jerry, boy, Jerry, you live on Red Shale, and I apologize, I can't... There you are. And Karen Eason, followed by Kathleen Kirchesk.
All right, I've been in a wheelchair for eight months, so it takes a while to get here.
Sure.
First time here. Been in Salem, Oregon since 1979. I'm glad to be here. Just as a citizen, would like to make a couple of comments. There was, one of the gentlemen that spoke, rather than put a traffic light on Boone Road and Battle Creek set a roundabout, and I'm in favor of that. I've lived in Bend for 27 years, and those work. They get traffic through it, not at the fastest speed, but they do get through it, and they work better than a traffic light. I wish Salem had more of them. The, I just want to tell you a story that happened to my wife and I at the other facility two days before Thanksgiving. We were coming back from Kaiser, visiting some friends, and turned off on Mission Street there, and as we turned off, the traffic was already backed up from there, from the freeway, going to Costco. And I said to my wife, I said, "Do we really want to wait in line here for this?" She said, "Yeah, we need to get in and get a few things." So, I don't know, maybe it took 20, 30 minutes to get to the Costco turnoff there and go in. Went inside, there was plenty of parking. Got inside the store, hardly anybody in there. It was all gas. People getting out of Dodge for the holidays. The gas station is a problem. I don't know that it's going to get any better over where I live. I live now off of Landown, up on the hill there a little bit. That concerns me, even though there's a runabout there. The traffic's going to back up to the freeway. I don't see how that's going to be fixed much. It's going to happen again, and that's really a big concern. And then there's only, you either come in on Boone Road, or you come in off of Kubler one-way right now, unless they fix that. You can't get across going west to get into that area unless you go down to Boone Road or take 27th, that I know of. But the big thing is the fueling station. If they didn't have the fueling station, I'd be in favor of it. At this point, I'm against it.
Okay, thank you very much. Karen, followed by Kathleen Kirchesk, Kirchesk, I'm sorry, and Michael Hughes.
Get it down to my level here. I'm Karen Eason, and I live at 2411 Winter Creek Way, which is in Woodscape Glen. And I think I've probably changed what I wanted to say about 10 times since being here. Because all of the things in opposition to Costco, not the shopping center idea, but to Costco, I agree with, and I'm representing several other homes on Winter Creek Way. I want to speak just from my heart. I grew up in Lake Oswego. I lived also in Mountain Park. And I implore you to take a look at those areas and what they have done with shopping centers. They totally fit into the environment that, where they have built. Wonderful stores and are very, very, very busy. And this is not going, this is going to be busy, but not a wonderful store. Costco is, I love Costco. I'm a member, all the people, I'm representing our members of Costco, and I want them to be in Salem. But nobody has talked about why they have not considered going across the freeway where there are other warehouses. And this, Costco is one of the biggest box stores that you could have. And I want those of you who think this is great, who envision having Costco across the street from your house, which is exactly what's going to happen when you drive out your driveway, when you go out your door. And would you buy their, and for people to say that home values will not go down, that's not true. And they will, for those neighborhoods. I'm lucky. I'm living in Woodscape Glen. I rent. And love it, and it's beautiful environment, the livability is great. But even there, that's going to go down because of all the enormous traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Kathleen Kirchesk, followed by Michael Hughes, followed by Nate Levin. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. My name is Kathleen Kirchesky, and I live at 2787 Cinder Cone Court Southeast. And we also got the letter from Costco asking for support. I feel like Costco is trying to solve problems for its customers, mostly convenience problems. And in that process, we, the neighborhood, are being asked to sacrifice our very livability. I can deal with, you know, we like Costco, we go to Costco, but I know there are congestion issues and whatnot. We deal with that. That's an inconvenience. As a neighbor, that's our life. We're there every day, every night, all year long, for hopefully decades to come. It's our life, it's our livability. We don't want the fumes from the fueling station, we don't want the noise, day and night, while semis are coming and going. We don't want the trees to be decimated and replaced with a 30-foot-high building. We don't want the traffic that's going to ruin our neighborhood feel. We do want the community retail that was proposed where the White Oaks can be preserved, where our livability can be preserved, where we can all live in harmony together. What's proposed is not what was originally proposed. What's proposed destroys our livability. I will thank you to oppose this idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hughes, followed by Nate Levin.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and City Council. My name is Michael Hughes. I live at 935 Barkstone Court Southeast. When PAC Trust applied for a zone change from residential to retail-commercial, it worried a lot of people. But the company insisted they needed to change, needed the zone change in order to build a neighborhood-community shopping center. So when the proposal to relocate Costco from its present location to the property on Kubler and 27th was announced, it came as quite a surprise. The current Costco location's a good one, in a strictly commercial, non-residential area, off a state highway and adjacent to an I-5 exit. However, the proposed site on Kubler is an area with residential development happening on three sides, and no other industrial or retail property in the vicinity. In 2006, PAC Trust applied for a change in zoning from RA to CR, and this concerned a lot of people living in the vicinity. Shortly after the initial application, a rumor started that the site was being considered for a Walmart, and that really got people's attention. So much so that the process dragged on for a year and a half. Cigna, South Gateway Neighborhood Association, managed to get audio recordings of the zone-change hearings, and I'd like to present some exact quotes from the testimony given at the time. PAC Trust consultant Jeff Trose said the reason they needed the zone change was because they were proposing, quote, "community-level commercial retail and service center as it is intended to serve a surrounding area that consists of several neighborhoods." And we use that term as it is defined in the Salem Comprehensive Plan. Later, he cited that definition, which states that it would serve, quote, "both neighborhood residents as well as residents of a market area composed of several neighborhoods." This is to be distinguished from what is also defined in the Comprehensive Plan as a regional facility, which is basically something that serves the entire urban area and outlying area. Mr. Trose went on to say that they were not proposing any gas station or automotive services at this site. PAC Trust representative Dick Laufenmaker later stated, quote, "We are not going to be creating something that's going to be drawing people from 10 miles." And also, this idea that we're going to be pulling from all over Salem, it just isn't going to happen. If a property owner can make false promises in order to get a zone change approved and then build something entirely different because it is now allowed under the new zoning, we have a real problem with our land use process. In the old days, this was known as bait and switch, and not considered acceptable behavior. In summary, PAC Trust should be held to their word, and I would argue that the construction of Costco would not be appropriate.
Time's up, Michael. Thank you. Thank you. Nate Levin, followed by John Groth, then John Ledger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Nate Levin. Address is 695 Winding Way, Southeast Salem. My wife and I have resided in that location for a little over 40 years, and we've been active in the community from the time that we moved in. As a Realtor specializing in industrial and commercial real estate, I have participated in development and redevelopment in the community. It was during one of my terms on the Planning Commission that we approved the PAC Trust development on Kubler and 27th. Part of the concern expressed by the neighbors as well as the planning department was anticipating a substantial increase in traffic with the commercial development. One of the uses that was defined in that location was the possibility of a large grocery store. I'm speaking in support of the Costco project because we reviewed and set the groundwork for that specific type of development. Several years ago, I am delighted to see that a major national entity is prepared to grow and to continue to serve the local population with a new facility. I absolutely understand that not in my backyard mindset. Will there be a change in traffic? Certainly. Will there be more people in the area? Certainly. Has Kubler Road brought more people through the South Salem area to be a conduit for thousands of people that use it every day to get to and from work? Certainly. Have we built more homes in the area? Yes. Are there more homes and service providers and commercial property and people and children to be added in the future? I think so. Costco is an excellent community neighbor, member, and contributor. They are worth keeping. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, Nate, thanks. I served on the Planning Commission with you, and I remember this issue very clearly. We've heard many, many definitions tonight: community center, neighborhood center, neighborhood community center, regional center. And I remember at the Planning Commission level that that was one of the main issues, that the community did not want a large commercial, they did not want a regional center, but that we did settle on a community center which is different than a neighborhood center. Can you talk to that a little bit?
Yes. Part of the conversation regarding the possibility of a regional shopping center normally moves in the vicinity of 400,000 to 600,000 square feet. You can refer back to that by looking at ICSC, which is International Council of Shopping Centers. There is BOMA, or Building Owners- There is BOMA, or Building Owners and Managers, statistical data. There is Urban Land Institute, which has changed. Back in 1969, when I started in real estate in central California, a regional center at that point in time was about a quarter of a million square feet. Because of the change in demographics and the dollars necessary to support those, the demographic now includes a larger area, and also, and a regional shopping center was specifically objected to, which is where you came down to the 300,000-square-foot number for this particular project.
Hey, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
John, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think there was someone in front of me, but I'm John Ledger, L-E-D-G-E-R, with 605 Valleywood in South Salem. You're going to hear a lot, I think, about bikeability and livability. I wanted to touch on something, a little different, and I understand your constraints on what you can consider, but maybe you'll put this in the back of your mind. Costco is moving from a nice central location to the very, very far side of South Salem, and it's going to draw from a much larger area, a lot of new people from considerable distances. This is bound to increase the vehicle miles traveled dramatically. And I did just some real quick back-of-the-envelope calculations. If you increase the average to-and-from distance that a Costco customer drives, just on average, by just three miles, that results in a greenhouse gas emission of about 1.3 tons per thousand visits. So you have 1,000 people visits, with that increase, on average, you're going to get emissions of about 1.3 tons. Now, 1,000 people, 1,000 visits, that sounds like a lot, but I'm guessing that will occur pretty quickly, maybe in a day, maybe more than that. So you roll that up over a week, and you roll that up over a month, you roll that up over a year, and you roll that up over 10 years, and I think you're going pretty substantially in the direction this city does not want to go, as far as greenhouse gas emissions. And I know this issue is important to the mayor, I know it's important to members of the council. I'm just hoping you'll put this in the back of your mind, and consider it if you can, or at least think about it in future projects. Thank you.
Okay. Julie Yip. There's Julie.
Mayor Bennett and City Council, my name is Julie Yip.
I don't see John Groth.
I live at 605 Valleywood Drive. I am a member of the South Gateway Neighborhood Association. I want to talk about the city of Salem, as it values the livability of our area. As you know, Councilmember Sally Cook talked about this new grant and new amount of money that was going to encourage walkability, connectivity, and encourage kids to walk and bike. So we do value walking and biking. We value a walking downtown core. We promote a healthy and active lifestyle among our citizens, but we don't walk the talk. This shopping center has the opportunity to be a local community retail space, with local stores, local shops, destination eateries, and become a community gathering place. And while Costco's a wonderful place to shop, a big warehouse, and as I see, a lot of us are members, they have over 80,000 members, actually, it's not appropriate for the Kubler site. It's a big box warehouse and a fueling station that encourages nothing but vehicle travel. And PAC Trust talks about this, you know, this vision of a shopping center, but it's going to be nothing but asphalt. It's going to have, it's kind of, I envision it like Kaiser Station, where you can't walk in the parking lot without worrying about the safety of being a pedestrian when you go from store to store. You actually have to get in your car to drive from one place to another. So I ask that the City Council not approve this proposed Costco relocation, and I encourage PAC Trust to develop the local community retail project that it had promised, like Orenco Station. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see Ken and Ann Hartung, like they left. Jason Valek, followed by Evan Jones, followed by John Shepherd. I'm going to suggest, we're almost halfway through now, so all of you who are waiting. If you're going to repeat what someone else said, I would just suggest, maybe just saying, I agree with parking oaks, whatever, whichever way it is, and we can move right along, give everyone a chance to share their opinion.
Hi. My name's Jason Valtch. I live at 2525 Fox Haven Drive, which is, oh, probably about 300 yards from where this location's going to be at. I oppose it, and my reason is the traffic. And that's pretty much it.
Great. Thank you, Jason. Evan Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Evan Jones. I live in Ward 3, the Cambridge neighborhood, which I kind of consider ground zero for this development. I don't have any new ground to cover, I just want to say that I am a Costco member, and I generally regard Costco with favor, but I think that we need to reject this proposal for this site.
Thank you very much. John Shepherd. John will be followed by Janelle Coakley, Bill Lucas, and Chuck Woodard.
Good evening, councilors. Mr. Mayor, Merry Christmas. I've submitted written testimony that was sent to you today that has the details and data supporting what I'm going to say tonight.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, my name's John Shepherd. I'm in Ward 4, Salem, Oregon. Thank you. I'd like to share a short story about two engineers and a practical sailor. Let's begin with a civil engineer with expertise in stormwater planning. He knows the city code. He's hired to build a system at minimal cost, a static design to meet the stormwater requirement. After identifying the stormwater rules, the Design Storm Standards, he drafts a beautiful model with his computer calculations and storm modeling algorithms, and he submits it as a plan to the city. Our city stormwater engineer now applies his skills to the problem, based upon the rules established by the department head, with recognition that, politically speaking, we need development. We cannot be the barrier to progress. The engineer looks at the data from this renowned civil engineer and gives it his stamp. We concur. Our last fellow, that practical sailor, spent his life curious about weather. He will never understand it, yet he plans for it. Mother Nature does not have a computer. She will always do what you don't expect, just because. Our sailor looks at the stormwater plan with a conservative eye, does his calculations using the worst-case conditions: no designer storm. The conclusion, the system planned as designed, will fail in less than a 10-year storm event. The takeaway, Mother Nature did not give the memo that she takes, that she follows a storm design parameter. The problem we have here is that Mother Nature's dynamic, not static, that we cannot measure the, cannot expect to know the duration or amount of water that's going to come. We can only plan for the best we can, and in this case, we need more stormwater detention on this plan. There are sites, and this is a map inside your handout, that have basic space for stormwater detention. This site does not. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any questions? Thank you very much. Janelle Coakley, followed by Bill Lucas, followed by Chuck Woodard.
I'm Janelle Coakley. I live at 2655 Fox Haven Drive. I'm opposed to Costco being where it is. I'm a member, and I like the store, but not in my backyard, because literally, I live one block off of Boone Road. And I'm opposed, not only because of the traffic, and the study that was done in 2007 did say that the sewage and the water runoff was a problem, and it was inadequate. And I can attest to this, because I have lived in that house for 20 years, and four times, my husband and I have experienced flooding. We live at the bottom of Fox Haven Drive, where, right where it starts turning. And just three weeks ago, when we had that huge amount of rain, our house was within three feet of water coming inside of it. We had our cul-de-sac that lives, that we live right beside, was flooded. The houses, the water was going up the sidewalks, it was in, our yard was flooded, it was in our garage. We were in, we were getting ready to be flooded. And it's not just my house, the whole, all the houses in the cul-de-sac are susceptible to flooding. My house and all of the houses west of my house on Fox Haven Drive, because of the water runoff, there is no place. They're building, if Costco builds as they propose to, we're talking about solid concrete and asphalt. Where is the water going to go? Am I going to now have to put my house on stilts, or, anyway? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor Cook. Just a moment.
Sorry, Ms. Coakley. I just had a question. Have you reported the flooding at all to City of Salem, or have anyone come out to look at that?
I have not reported the actual flooding. I have called, and our storm drains get blocked up. I have called the city, and I've asked them to send the street sweeper out, and I was told the city of Salem has one street sweeper, and we are on the schedule that, in the summertime, when you don't need a street sweeper, because we don't have rain and we don't have silt and runoff. So it is a problem on our street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Lucas, followed by Chuck Woodard, followed by Larry McAllister.
Hello, my name's Bill Lucas. I live at 2241 Boone Road, which is right next to the proposed intersection light that would be added between Boone and Battle Creek. I oppose Costco going in. I have trouble getting out of my driveway now, at 8:00, when traffic backs up past my house. It'll be 8:00, 3:00, and right around 4:00, when school lets out. So I just wanted to speak and let you know that I oppose Costco.
Okay. Thank you very much. Chuck Woodard.
Chuck Woodard, 5438 Swallow Tail Street, Southeast. I just wanted to say a couple of things. Mayor Bennett, you and I share a worldview, and that's a strong community. I think of enterprises in the past, Woolworths, Toys R Us, Kmart, retail's ever-evolving, and I think whatever we decide we need to put in there needs to fit the community. And a large building, in my opinion, is really not the best solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry McAllister, followed by Sylvia Spalding.
Larry McAllister, 6381 Coats Drive, Southeast. I'm opposed to it, because of traffic on Kubler, I think it's barely able to handle it at times now, and I think that would add a lot more to it. And I also don't think that that's a good location right next to a neighborhood like that, and I think if they want to build a new store, they could find more suitable places where there wouldn't be a bunch of opposition to it.
Thank you very much. Sylvia Spalding.
Sylvia Spalding, 1965 Webster Drive, Southeast in Cambridge Heights. I too am opposed to the Costco going to this location, mainly because of the traffic. Took me forever to get out of my neighborhood on Battle Creek. It is backed up now, and it will certainly be backed up more after Costco is being built. Someone had mentioned, why was Costco, was the big box building not put east of the freeway where some of the other large warehouses are? That's, it would still cause problems of traffic, but it seems that it would be more beneficial out there. Where Costco is now seems to be a good location. I don't know the specifics as to why they're moving, but they are in a much better commercial area than the neighborhood that they want to go in. I too also think of the small shopping center in our neighborhood as being that. Local businesses, something small, the Salem medical facility is there, they have PT Northwest is there. These are all little, small businesses, and that's what should be there, not a big box. So I too oppose.
Okay, thank you very much. Herbert and Edie Spady. Followed by Justin Winters and Brad Cunningham after that. Could you give your name, would you mind?
Herbert Spady.
Thank you.
Dr. Herbert Spady. I live in Silberton. I have been living in this area for many years, a lot of the time with a Salem address, but now in Silberton. When I came to Salem, it had a population of 35,000 people. I don't know what the population is now, but it must be gigantic. I personally am in favor of the new Costco store, because shopping in the Salem store is a nightmare. It's too small, and the parking area is too small. And I just might make the comment, shopping center, why is everyone talking about the term "shopping center"? I think Costco has defined what they want to put there. The name doesn't mean anything. The biggest problem in Salem, and possibly on Kubler, but every street in Salem is a traffic nightmare, and it is not going to improve ever. How many households have two cars? And how many high school kids have cars? It's, I don't, I can't offer a solution to that problem, and I don't think anything, anyone can. But Salem is a traffic nightmare.
Thank you. Y'all keep that in mind when we talk that third bridge, okay? Justin Winters.
Hi, my name is Justin Winters, and I was born here, and I'm autistic, and one of the things that I have a lot of trouble with is knowing who to trust. And when it comes to Costco, I've done my research, and that is like, pretty much exclusively where I shop, because I don't have to worry about whether I'm paying too much for something. I know that they don't gouge their people, and they use some sort of a set profit margin over everything they have, and they even look through and vet the types of products they carry, so I know that there's a better chance that I won't have to return something. And I have, I find that the current Costco's a nightmare getting in and out of, and sometimes I've even had to go to Wilsonville, which is a horrible waste of gas, in my opinion, but it's one of the few options I have when I need something that the little current Costco doesn't have. And I understand that this is supposed to be a bigger Costco, and it's probably going to carry stuff like Wilsonville does, and I think that this is a dream come true, and I know that it adds a lot of traffic, but when I go through Kubler now, I find that it's largely a dream, and I'm not talking about the side streets, because I don't know and I don't live off of those, but when I go through there, it seems like it's wide open, and Costco's plan that I saw a picture of looks like there's a lot of... And the, and Costco's plan that I saw a picture of looks like there's a lot of trees that they're adding. They're gonna green it up and it's gonna look beautiful, I think, off. So, I don't know. That's, that's my take is I'm very much in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brad Cunningham, followed by Roy, Ray Escaville, followed by Kyle Scott.
Hi, Brad Cunningham, 1542 Freedom Loop Southeast, stating my opposition to the new Costco for the very reasons of all the others, uh, oppositions to Costco. Just a few things. Costco is a membership-driven, uh, organization. So their, their site is not the most urgent necessity for business like that. We all know that on the other side of I-5 Mill Creek, there's large tracts of land and available sites, um, which potentially are more appropriate for, uh, this type of location. Uh, no housing developments are around that area. Uh, just one other thing, uh, the role of a corporation is to maximize our profits. Um, so that's one thing to keep in mind. Um, the other thing is in today's political climate, I feel a little, um, like deception and some, uh, falsities kind of come up and things like saying, "We paid for the road." There's no alternative to the trees on the site. It's, uh, gonna be a, uh, we're, it's, this is a community shopping center when clearly it's not, are things that I would like you guys to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Escaville. Okay. Kyle Shaw.
Actually, it's Scott, but that's okay.
Oh, Scott, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Actually, Mayor, I stood here in 2007 at this very podium with, opposing PAC Trust's original plan for this site. I don't know about you, but it was, it was portrayed to us as a community shopping center where we could walk or ride our bikes, uh, to the, to the stores. And, and it was gonna influence and, and elevate and, uh, be a, a benefit to our neighborhoods. Um, I don't know anybody that bikes or walks to Costco. Uh, unless you can carry it, you know, and, and you're a better man than I am if you do. But I don't get out of there without spending $300 and a truck full of stuff. So, um, I don't see that that's gonna be a community-type store for our area. The other thing I'm concerned about is the interchange. I mean, this interchange handles, it's the only northbound interchange for all of South Salem. So it draws from, almost from Adrona to River Road down to the very end. Because the interchange at the end of South Salem, the very south part of South Salem, does not have a north, uh, a way to get onto the northbound lanes. So everybody's gonna bottleneck themselves into this one area trying to get, get to I-5. So you've got a commercial space north of that and now you're gonna put a Costco south of that. And you're gonna end, put this cork right before you get to the interchange of all these people trying to get there and get to work and get to Portland and everywhere else. And I just don't see that working. The other thing is that I look at the cost-benefit things here. What the city gets out of this, I'm sure they get revenues out of this. I'm sure that PAC Trust is gonna get money out of this. And I know Costco, with a bigger store, is gonna have more revenues coming out of this. But what does it give to the community? Having another Costco next to my house doesn't mean anything to me because I already have a Costco that I can go to. So why do I want a bigger one? And then, so for us, we get more traffic, we get more pollution, we get more light pollution, we get more congestion, all of those things. But we don't have any benefit to our neighborhoods and to, into our area. And lastly, I would just reiterate something that a lady said before, is if this was going in next to your homes, what would your vote be? Because it would affect all of you and you'd be standing right here with the rest of us opposing this, this proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Kyle. Val Cooper, Mark Hubbell, Deb Cozy. Any takers? Deb, are you it? Okay. So Rachel Harris will be after Deb.
So I'm Deb Cozy. I live just off of Sunny Side and Kubler in Ward Four. My, uh, my kids go to Judson and Sprague. I work for a business near the intersection of Battle Creek and Kubler. And I'm very familiar with the intersection set in, uh, South Salem. I frequently travel to the Fairview Industrial Area on my lunch hour. And there are many unimproved streets, uh, north of Kubler that concern me as well with this development. My daily commute concerns me more each day. And I'm not just bothered by the additional time it takes me, I'm concerned for safety. I've seen countless car accidents at Commercial and Kubler, Battle Creek and Kubler, Battle Creek and Boone, cars flipped over at Battle Creek and Boone. The traffic sounds that I hear from my home and what I experience during my daily drive are already impacted because Kubler is the main access to I-5. From what I understand regarding the size of the Costco proposal, this large of a development just won't fit. If Costco desires to expand, I would urge that Costco look at the large piece of land on the east side of I-5. I believe it's also commercially zoned and it's about three times the size, 80 acres. Guess that's about it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Uh, Rachel Harris.
Hi.
Followed by Judith Van Oostal.
My name is Rachel Harris. I live at 2231 Genesis Court Southeast. I just want to thank you so much for how, for letting us come and speak our mind on this. And thanks for listening and taking our presentations and our concerns into your, um, decision on this. I've learned a lot through hearing everybody speak, PAC Trust, the neighborhood associations, the individual homeowners like myself. And there's something that I just keep thinking about. Between Wilsonville and Albany, all the way over to Bend and over to Dallas and even further than that, we, we keep hearing about big box, box, um, stores. What are the big box stores? We have Target. How many Targets are in this area? There's two. Fred Meyer. How many are there? There's two. What about Walmarts? There's three. How many Costcos? There's one. That is a bigger box store than the other box stores. There's only one. It's drawing more people into the area. People have said it before, Kubler, the traffic, the impact, the livability. You've heard all of that. But I wanted to point that out. Costco is the only one in like a 50 or more mile radius. You have to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Judith Van Oostal and Carolyn Childers. And then Pat Gallagher will come next.
My name is Judith Van Oostal. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I will focus on particular parts of my letter that I already sent in. I am a registered nurse and I focused on, uh, health promotion and disease prevention, injury prevention for about 45 years. So I wanted to emphasize the concern I have for traffic safety. Uh, so I'll just read a couple of parts of my letter that I think address that. Um, Battle Creek Road, uh, oh, I should also have said that I live at 3375 Deerlight Court Southeast, which is south of the area that we're speaking about. So Battle Creek Road Southeast is a two-lane country road that provides sole access to seven densely populated neighborhoods and Fire, uh, Salem Fire Department Station Nine, which is one block from the area we're talking about, and Lee Elementary School, which is , um, just a little bit below that. It's also the sole access to multiple residential areas in Marion County between Kubler Road and the City of Turner. I want to underscore the fact that the two-lane Battle Creek Road is the only access to the entrance streets for seven residential neighborhoods, including Lee Elementary School and the Salem Fire Department Station Nine. Consider this daily scenario of shoppers heading to and from Costco between 3:00 and 6:00 PM, parents trying to pick up their children from school, school buses full of kids tied up in traffic, local residents trying to get home, and then a call goes out for rolling fire equipment from Fire Station Nine. They're not gonna get there. Please recognize the significance of the negative impact this store relocation will have for all those who live in adjacent neighborhoods and also rely on access to the school and emergency services. At the very least, put the brakes on this proposal until a plan has been developed to address the traffic problems that will surely result. If a solution to the problem cannot be defined, I encourage you to approach this strategically, given careful consideration to a more appropriate location for a Costco store and what kinds of businesses would be appropriate at the Kubler and 27th Avenue location. And I am a proud Costco card member. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Carolyn Childers, followed by Pat Gallagher.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Childers. I live, uh, my husband and I live two and a half miles south of the intersection of Kubler Boulevard and Battle Creek Road. We've lived there 24 years. We make frequent trips through the intersections involved. And my primary concern, actually my only concern, because I know the nearby residents have addressed all their specific that they have the right to, but my concern is traffic safety. I don't know how you can make a decision to approve this when the neighborhood association and others who have asked for the underlying data, uh, had, from the applicant, have not been provided that data. I don't think you should proceed until they've, uh, received everything they've asked for. The ramifications to the safety of everybody directly around the proposed site and those of us who live south of the site who have to go through those intersections daily, uh, you put us at risk if you do not make certain that due diligence has been done to examine the data of the traffic analysis. And that has not been done. They've asked for it, they've not been given it. I agree with the, one of the previous speakers who said there should be integrity in the planning process. That's absolutely true. So I'd like to know if those quotes that were shown, that were absolute quotes of promises that were made by the developers on what was gonna be put there, were those misquotes or were they accurate? Were the zoning changes made based on those promises or were they not? There's no doubt that the Costco, which I am an 18-year member of, I love Costco, I hate this decision. And it's a regional shopping attraction. Anybody who says otherwise doesn't know what they're talking about. Friend of mine I talked to last week, uh, drives 25 miles from Scott's Mills frequently to go to Costco. She has friends from Woodburn, uh, from Silberton that drive frequently to go to this Costco. So it is regional and the traffic ramifications are regional. They're not community, they're not even city, they're regional. And if you don't disclose the data that was used to come up with these decisions, I don't know how you can examine the impact on the intersections that are impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Pat Gallagher, followed by Judy Morris. Nothing from... No comment. Okay. You're Pat. Yeah. Judy Morris, followed by Victor Caballero.
Judy Morris, South Gateway Neighborhood Association. Uh, I'd just like to reiterate what everyone else has said. The gentleman said so eloquently about why we were moving the site for Costco even further south and generating yet more traffic by doing so. It didn't make any sense to me until the other gentleman started talking about the intersections in, at I-5 and the, the draw for having it in this neighborhood. So I think the neighborhood would be better served and future development in that area if there's just a smaller-scale resale, retail outlet. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor? Uh, Peter Khan.
Mayor Bennett, City Manager, Member of the City Council. My name is Peter Khan. I'm Assistant Vice President, Real Estate, Costco Wholesale, 999 Lake Drive, Isiqua, Washington. Costco has been a corporate citizen of Salem since 1992. We currently have about 380 employees in the city with a annual payroll of approximately $9 million. In addition, we use many local vendors in our operations which helps create and sustain jobs within the community. We take a great pride in being a good corporate citizen and strive to continue building on the foundation we have worked hard to develop during our time in this community. We have quite simply outgrown our current facility, a fact that most members in this room could easily attest to. Our first inclination was to expand our existing facility, but physical constraints surrounding our site made that impossible. We have studied and eliminated all possible options to improve and stay in our current location and need to find an alternative solution is real and with timing of the utmost importance. Thus, we've looked at alternative locations in and around Salem, but this proposed location is the only one that met all our needs, including the same zoning classification that applies to our current facility. We would not be here today if we were not satisfied that locating there complied with the law and met our own standards for safety and development. In reviewing the proposed site, we completed our own independent due diligence that included studying all the technical aspects such as traffic, environmental, physical characteristics. Before even starting this effort, we met with staff to discuss zoning of the site to identify any special items that we should focus on in our review of the property. The answer to the question before you tonight is not gray from our perspective. The property is zoned for our use and we have prepared and presented plans and meet all the technical standards set forth by the city, as evidenced by the city staff's approval of the application. In reliance upon the existing zoning and the city's previous approval of this site for a shopping center, we have spent approximately $1 million on due diligence and building plans which have been submitted to the city for approval. Our request to you is simple. Having met all the applicable conditions pertaining to the zoning previously assigned to this location, we ask you to affirm the decision of the planning administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Any questions?
Thank you.
Uh, David Kidd. Robert, boy. Live on Winter. Could be. There he is.
He was pointing to me because I can't hear.
Oh, okay.
I can't tell if my name was called. Um, my name is Robert Jaeger and I live in the Southeast Community. And I'm opposed to this proposal. I've heard my friends and neighbors speak in opposition and I share their thoughts and feelings. I don't think Costco is, uh, consistent with the neighborhood and it isn't what I expected and it's not something I want. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robert. Catherine Chambers, followed by David Carey. And then David and Julie Hodges.
You'll have to forgive my voice, it's a little hoarse. My name is Catherine Chambers and I live at 2360 Winter Creek Way. Um, I agree with my friends and neighbors that oppose the Costco development. And I just wanted to share some of the impact personally that I have, that I have experienced or will experience if this proposal is approved. I live on the corner of Boone and Battle Creek. So it's ground zero. And, uh, the traffic on Boone is already so heavy and backed up because people are using it as a shortcut. Um, it's difficult to exit the driveway out of our development. It's difficult to exit the driveway out of our development. And at the intersection of Boone and Battle Creek, it's already almost impossible to make a left turn due to heavy traffic coming both ways. The proposed traffic controls for this area, because of the development, they appear to be woefully inadequate to address an increase in traffic if Costco is allowed to come into the area. And so this is an issue of safety and livability that the City Council must address. A second concern is storm water control. That's been addressed again here. But the last, my personal experience, the last heavy rain we had about three weeks ago, there was standing water on 27th, it was flooded. And if the heavy rain events continue as they are predicted, there could be worse flooding in the area. Costco needs to prove to the city that they are properly addressing this issue and we are depending on the council, the city planners and Public Works to keep us safe. Finally, we all want a city that we can be proud of with development that not just seeks profit, but development that respects our citizens' opinions and the right to a safe and sustainable home and development that respects the environment and the wonderful resources we have been given in this valley. Thank you.
Thank you. David Carey, followed by David and Julie, I think it's Hodges.
My name is Dave Carey. I live at 1085 Shirley Drive South. It's down close to the Belkrast Memorial Cemetery. I'm not, I don't live near where Costco is proposing to build. I speak from a very selfish standpoint, as I think everybody else has, that has spoken here tonight. If it were going to be built, built next to my house, I'd probably be opposing it. But one of the decisions that I made when I decided to buy the house that I have bought, which I bought four years ago, I've lived in Salem for eight now, I bought it four years ago, was I looked at the neighborhood and there was no big places that anybody was going to build a Costco or anything else. I picked my neighborhood. When you, when you choose to buy a home that is located next to, you know, 20, 30 acres that's going to be built, I think you have to expect that maybe you're not going to be in favor of what they're going to put in there. And I think a lot of people aren't and I understand why they're not. I also understand why Costco feels they have to move. It is a nightmare trying to fight your way in and out of that place the way it is now. That's one of the reasons, a former speaker said, you know, I don't know anybody who does shopping at Costco on their bicycle. Well, I am one who does. Almost, most of my shopping at Costco is by bike. And if you want to know something that's really frightening, ride a bicycle down Mission from South Salem. Of course, riding a bike at 80 years old is probably stupid to begin with, but I can't help that. But at least going down Kubler is a heck of a lot safer than going down Mission. I live seven miles from Costco. When I ride my bike, I, it takes me 10 miles to get there because I just won't ride on Mission. It's too dangerous. So I am speaking in favor of the Costco location.
Thank you very much. David and Julie, K. Carla, with a K, I can't, I can't see. I just can't do the last name. You live on, I don't know where, what do you think that's? I'm not going to say it either. Nope, okay. Carla Anuda? Okay, God. What part, what part of law school taught you that's a good way to write? I'm sorry. Oh, my God. Whoa. Okay, I'm sorry, Carla. David Peterson. David Peterson? You're passing? That's it. Anyone else want to get up? You do? Go for it. Give your name and ward or address, if you would.
Good evening. My name's Kristi Mayer. I live at 1355 Elser Drive Southeast. So this is my neighborhood and I was not going to speak tonight until the trees set me off. I want to tell you that 52 trees will not replace one 80 year old tree. The amount of carbon that that 80-year-old beauty absorbs is something you can't replace in 20 years. So those trees are important and if you pave around them, you're going to kill them anyway. It's not a community. That's not what we do. It's not what we stand for. That's not what Salem believes in. We believe in people. We believe in community. We believe in small businesses and small opportunities, not a big, huge monolith sitting in somebody's backyard blocking the sun. There are a lot of places to build and that is not it. Take 18-wheelers, school buses, dogs, kids, bikes, cars, and put all that together and you tell me what you get. I strongly and vehemently opposed to this and I work at Costco.
Okay, we're all done, huh? Counselor McCoy? Oh, questions of staff. Where are you? Aaron? You're on, or do I want to do the first? Anyone got any questions for Aaron? Go ahead, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions that come up and just wanted to get clarification. Stormwater detention, similar to all other commercial developments, no stormwater can leave faster than if there was no development on the site?
So there's two portions of the site. There's a portion on the west that was subject to subdivision that went into effect prior to our current stormwater standards. So that existing area on the west end of the site has to comply with the stormwater standards in that, at that time. The majority of the site on the east, where Costco is being developed, complies with our new stormwater requirements.
But even the old stormwater requirements wouldn't let water leave my site faster than if there was no development, correct? We just have some new standards on what types of treatment?
Yeah, is it a net zero or not a net zero?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Now I'll pass on to.
Sure. Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's talk about the traffic study. Costco says it was out of the goodness of their heart and the appellant says they were required to under the site review plan. Which is it?
They're required to for this application. A development like this that generates more than 1,000 trips on an arterial street is required to provide a TIA.
Okay, now let's talk about what happened in 2007. You heard the quotes. You probably weren't there, but is it your view that those were accurate quotes from your review of the record of what happened in 2007 about we're not going to build, we're going to build a neighborhood shopping center, not anything that will draw people from 10 miles and the other types of quotes that were pulled out?
So I'm not going to speak to the quotes, but I can speak to the conditions of approval that the Planning Commission and City Council placed on this. And what was the condition at the time is a retail shopping center. That was the language that's used in the condition. And with that condition, there's limits on the floor area for the development site.
Which, which Costco is well within that?
Correct.
Including the outbuildings.
Correct.
So, so part of this turns to some effect on what is a retail organization? Is Costco a retailer or a wholesaler?
We've looked at our use classification chapter and we believe that this falls clearly under the retail sales use category.
Okay, but my question was, that's one of the tipping points, at least in some of this, is it a retailer or is it a wholesaler?
It's a retail use.
And you're saying that's what the code says?
That's correct.
Okay, that, no, thanks.
Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've heard a lot of reference to square footage and that that's what determines what type of retail establishment is or shopping center, whatever term you want to use. Is that the only criteria? Is it just, is it strictly square footage?
I'm looking at the condition on that previous land use approval and it says a retail shopping center and then it gives us a maximum floor area for that and we found that it meets those.
And that's it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor McCoy?
Some questions on the TIA. So they were required to do a TIA. What, some, I'm looking at some of the arguments that others have made here and, you know, one was they did not, what, what did the TIA cover? What were they required to cover in terms of the whole, you know, the roads and the different road systems? Was it two or three intersections or was it all the intersections off of there or what was it?
I may want to invite our traffic engineers, Public Works Department, to respond to that.
Good evening. Tony Martin, Assistant City Traffic Engineer. We had them look at the exact same intersections that they studied for the comp plan change, zone change in 2006. So we were comparing apples to apples.
Which were?
The ramp terminals, 27th, Battle Creek and Commercial along Kubler and Boone, Boone-Battle Creek.
Boone-Battle Creek, was that the last one? Okay, so that was five or six incidentally on this list, a lot more. I've read somewhere in here, I've read so much stuff here on Crossside today, but in one of the, one of the objections was made by someone in the Kiddison, Killison, whatever the, Kiddleson? Kiddleson study. The objection said that Costco was using Costco traffic data that they'd called from all the different Costcos around the country and not local traffic data based on the city ordinance. Can you address that? In other words, they were saying that was against the, directly against what the city ordinance called for, which was using whatever that book is and applying it locally.
I'll try to explain. What our TIA guidelines say is that you would use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Traffic Trip Generation Manual. Or if there's better data available, we may use that. This is a case where the ITE manual for this membership club is not the best data. It underestimates traffic. So Kiddleson has a database of Costco actual traffic for different Costcos and they have actual Costco traffic data and that is better, more conservative data to use in the traffic analysis.
What do you mean by more conservative?
It's, it's higher numbers.
Okay, thank you. That sort of sounded to me like a lower number, so I wanted to make sure I understood that. Okay, those were the two, those are the big ones. So I mean, your answer then is based on what you required, it was pretty much sort of a more of a Kubler impact in some of the direct intersections off of Kubler and you're not going down Battle Creek and you're not going down Boone or into Cambridge Heights and those kinds of things.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's, is that typical?
It is typical. We typically look at the major intersections. We don't typically go into residential neighborhoods unless we have reason to believe that there's a safety or operational issue. And then the challenge is what mitigation could we do possibly within a neighborhood? And those are always challenging in a residential neighborhood.
Okay. And I'm going to address one more time. I understand the issues with the regional approach, but I saw somewhere in there that this store was doing $250 million a year, which is staggering, and stunning, as I came from a retail background way back, but it had 80,000 customers, 80,000 members. So how many homes are in, how many homes do we build on our water system? 49?
45,000. 45,000 accounts.
Okay, 45,000 accounts.
55,000 in the.
That 80,000 dwarfs the number of households in Salem, so to me, it can go by square footage and all this other follower all, that's a regional shopping center. It's drawing from 20, 30, 40, 50 miles up the canyon and east and west and Polk County and everything else. So that's where I'm really having a struggle. We're getting into, we're getting into what we typically get into in these developments, which is, well, here's the rules and here's what we wrote and that's etched in stone, so we can't do anything about it, even when, to me, using a logical approach, it doesn't mean that. And in this case, I do think this is a regional center, but I don't see any way we're going to be able to apply that based on the restrictions we're having in this judgment. But I really have an issue with that. I think that does not fit the neighborhood when you've got that kind of volume and that kind of traffic rolling in there.
Could you, one of the questions I had, I'm going to follow up on this traffic for just a second while you're up here, Tony, is Ms. Childers' comments, and there were others about the inability to get a hold of data around traffic. What, I don't quite understand. Aren't those public records, if they've been introduced into the record? I don't quite understand what's happening there.
I think what they're requesting is the actual count data where the traffic engineers put the hoses across the driveways and counted the number of cars in and out.
They're saying they don't have, that it sounded like they're being denied, acts like the data is somehow proprietary or something like that. I mean, I just didn't understand why they can't get their hands on sort of the backup and it was focused particularly on Kiddleson, I thought. Maybe I misunderstood.
That's, that's the way I understood it, too.
Okay. Can they get the data?
I would have to look at Kiddleson to see if they would be able to produce that. That's not something that we would require.
Okay. Is that like a, is that, is, do other people get to look at this data? I mean, I, I'm just curious. It does seem like an interesting question. I was just surprised you couldn't look at that kind of detail.
In, in the ITE trip generation manual, it has many, 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 many studies, that those studies are held somewhere in Washington DC. And I don't see those, they, they go on a graph and they, they tell me the traffic generation for different uses. I don't need to see the data to know that this is pretty accurate. If we needed to see the data, I think we could request of Kiddleson to provide actual count data from the different stores and it would show that the trip generation for the Costco that they provided in there and that they analyzed is considerably higher than there would be in the ITE manual.
Well, then, would you push back then on her argument that there's a safety issue here? I, I was, found it compelling when she talked about safety in that area and counts and things like that. That's the kind, I, I heard it kind of as a package and I'm kind of wondering how we look at that sort of testimony.
I don't have a good answer for safety because safety is subjective. We can, we can look at actual crashes that have occurred. One of the things that I've heard is that there's crashes at Battle Creek and Boone. Those, Battle Creek is the through movement, Boone is stopped, so the left turns from the stop control have difficulty during the peak times. A traffic signal is the, is part of the mitigation package that, that PAC Trust will be constructing. That will give the ability for the vehicles to turn off of.
Is that where the two signals are together, the fellow reference that?
They are, they're about 400 feet apart. They're a little closer than we would like, but, but the streets are what the streets are. They're, they're, they're where they are. There really isn't a, you know, a roundabout was suggested. Roundabouts take a pretty big footprint, so we would probably be looking at taking property from all four corners to, to install a roundabout there.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to follow up on the, the close traffic signals and can you, can you give us an idea of what we can expect at those intersections if we have traffic signals that are closer than you would like to see them?
I would say on occasion, they will, they will back into one another during the, you know, the, during the most peak time. For most of the time, it should operate okay. We have, we, our traffic signal engineer will work very hard to time them based on the actual traffic data and make them work as well as they can.
Counselor Cook?
You asked my question, thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to follow up on two things. One is this, the better data analysis and, you know, what did Kiddleson have? The way I understand it, the data that was not revealed is the data that Kiddleson used in reaching its conclusions in their report. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if there, if, if, say, Greenleaf or I forget, Greenlight So if there, if, if, say, Greenleaf or I forget, Greenlight or whatever the other traffic study, in order for them to have the same data that Kiddleson had, they'd have to have that data, otherwise their conclusions could not be based on the same set of facts that Kiddleson had.
The, the trip generation that Kiddleson used in their study is based on traffic counts that they collected and they used it in their study.
Right.
So that number is available in their study.
Well, then what's the difference between the number and the data?
The data is, I think what the data, what they're talking about is the hose count. So between eight and nine, there were this many cars.
Got it.
Between nine and 10, there were this many cars. And it, and it's a cumulative data of a particular day.
As opposed to, here's the total.
Instead of the summary.
Okay. Then I, this is for you, Brian. I'm looking at your report, this is back to the wholesale versus resale, and on page three of your report, in italics at the bottom, you say, "General wholesaling is characterized by sales of physical products primarily to customers other than the general public." And then on page four, there's more of it, but on, on the next page, you say, "Retail sales is characterized," I don't know, that might be "are characterized by the sale, lease or rental of product directly to the final consumers." Is that the definition of wholesale and retail in, in the Salem Revise Code?
Does come from the code, correct?
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor McCoy?
Back to the TIA a little bit, a couple of the other issues in the, in the Cigna objections had to do with queuing and it says, for example, you know, northbound right turn movement queue length, 306 feet for the intersection exceeds available storage at 290. So I'm assuming it's backing up farther, it's going to back up into, you know, it's going to block the traffic, but is that at peak hours? I mean, what is that, is that, tell me what that means, what their objection is and what your response is to it.
The queuing analysis is typically the peak hour. That's what, you know, if we can accommodate 90% of the peak hour, then we can accommodate most other hours of the day. I think the, the, what we're talking about is that the through traffic will back up and anybody wanting to turn left or right to get into the turn lanes will have to wait till that cycle clears because it, we don't typically build turn lanes longer than the through queue because that would essentially just create another through lane for a great distance.
Okay. So in this case, they're saying that's a problem, but you're saying that's a peak hour, so even though it's longer than the queue lane, that's not a problem? When does it become a problem?
I mean, I guess on Kubler, I've driven Kubler and if I'm going westbound on Kubler and I want to turn right onto Commercial, if the traffic is backed up, I can't get into the right turn lane because traffic is backed up. So when the light turns green, the traffic flows, I get in the turn lane and I move out. It's, that's essentially the scenario.
Well, I understand the issue, I'm just saying, at what point does it not become tolerable and you have to do something to fix it or?
I don't know.
Or you just have to live with it if it overloads what your system was? I'm just curious, I mean.
Well, Counsel, at some point, the, the facility is over capacity and then you either, the counsel had this discussion just a few weeks ago, either you accept the congestion and say, that's, we live in an urban area and that's what the congestion is, or you invest in widening the facilities. So, you know, the, at some point, you've built what you've built.
I get that, once, once it's been built and it's, you know, and you're down that road, but we're not to that point yet and they're pointing out that in your studies, this is already a threat. So if this hasn't been built yet and maybe your TA is wrong, all of a sudden, we're in the thing a year and you got the same problems, what are you going to do then? In a growing economy with a giant store that's going to grow more volume. So isn't that then, is there concerns about the TIA good or accurate? And shouldn't we address them now before they're built?
Well, the TIA shows, you know, what the impacts are and, and how much improvement can be done. There is a certain level, you know, Ms. Killington talked about the investment that's already been made by, by PAC Trust and the city out there to accommodate that traffic. If other traffic is, is growing around it, there's only so much that we can exact from, you know, any one developer for, to address these issues. So at some point, you know, it becomes, you know, with these little, and we've had this discussion as well, the smaller developments, just, just background growth in traffic throughout the community, at some point, it's the community's responsibility to, to do, to do the improvements or accept the congestion.
I guess, again, I'm going to reiterate, my point is, I think they've made a valid point and you're saying, well, yeah, that's an issue, but it's only at the peak hours. The rest of the time, it's, it's okay, but given the growth that's coming, it'll be more than the peak hours and at some time, we're going to have backup on a constant basis and gee, then the communities have to fix it. Well, I'm not so comfortable making that decision if that's the response. And I understand that putting more on them, but I understand. On the other hand, maybe that shouldn't go in the place it's going if that's going to be resolved.
This all sounds pretty familiar to me right now.
Yeah, it really does.
It really does. I hope everyone remembers this conversation because really. Go ahead.
I'd like to revisit the issue about what was said and what was promised at 2007. Here's what we are going to develop, here's what we are not going to develop, and now in 2018, the here's what we are not going to develop, to develop becomes the here's what we are going to develop. And I'm not going to ask Aaron about that, I'm asking either the Community Development Director or the Deputy Community Development Director because you are the guys who get paid the big bucks to talk about this. So I'd like your response to the argument that was raised both by the appellant and also by various people who testified. What do we do if they come in and say, we're going to build X, Y and Z and then 14 years later or 12 years later, 11 years later, they come in and say, we're going to build ABC, which we said we weren't going to build?
Hi, Lisa Anderson Ogilvy, your planning administrator. So I don't know if those quotes were accurate because Aaron and I did not go back and listen to the recordings and I wasn't at those hearings.
Could we assume they're accurate for the purposes of your response? Because if they're not accurate, they say the total thing and we don't even need to talk about it.
I read the council decision and the findings that the council adopted for their zone change and what they seemed to rely upon was the size of the facility and the fact that it was going to be a shopping center. And generally, actually always, never do we go back and listen to testimony from a zone change 10, 12 years before when a development comes in for site plan review. So what we look at are what were the conditions of previous land use decisions that were placed on it and are they meeting those conditions? And the only condition that was placed on it related to the use is a size limit and a requirement that it be a retail shopping center. The findings in the council's decision about the size limit is that if it's under 300,000, it is not a regional center. So they were very clear that that 300,000 square foot is what kicks it into being regional and there was no specific discussion of various types of uses in there. Now, I have heard that it was very clearly said it wasn't going to be a Walmart, although then Ms. Killington did present a letter that seems to suggest that at some point they did mention it could be Costco. So I don't know specifically what the council relied on as far as verbal testimony, but their findings and the decision that they adopted don't limit any type of use or any one building's size use. It's all about the overall size of the, the buildings together.
Norm, do you have anything to add?
Well, the only thing to add would be just reaffirm what Lisa is saying, which is that unless it is found in the record of the conditions for approval or within any other facet of the conditions for the decision that was made, it is effectively just statements that are offered as part of the testimony, nothing that's binding.
I believe lawyers would call that the parole evidence rule.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you. I just had a question for Lisa Anderson Ogilvy. With the long-term comp plan update, are we considering things like regional versus local, community shopping centers and redefining those definitions? I know that was brought up several times tonight where we use certain language when we're passing ordinances or making decisions and then we don't define the language very clearly, like necessary with the trees. Are we going to have to revisit this next month and the month after or is this something that's being addressed in a long-term comp plan?
Well, we're not to that point yet in the comp plan project, but we will, you know, look at all the definitions in the comp plan and there is language in there about community shopping centers and regional shopping centers, although it doesn't define the size. So I'm sure that's something we will look at, but it can't be specific, but I don't see why we wouldn't.
And as far as, I'm sorry, one more question. As far as options to mitigate some of the livability standards, were those discussed at all with the applicant? I know it was discussed in the testimony that the applicant has always done whatever has been requested. Did we make reasonable requests? Did we ask for purviewist pavement? Did we ask for pedestrian bridges? What kind of, what did we ask and what were the answers?
So, no, we did not ask for those things. This is site plan review, right? So it's not a zone change like they went through before, it's not a conditional use where the criteria is about livability. Instead, the criteria for approval of a, of a site plan review is, doesn't meet all the standards in the code. So generally, we're looking for parking, landscaping setbacks, height, that kind of thing, and doesn't meet the conditions of approval for the zone change. And so we don't really have the ability to start asking for additional things about livability because it's not related to any of the approval criteria.
So all of that, if I'm understanding you right, would have need to have been included when the zone change occurred in 2007?
Yes.
In order for it to be a reasonable ask for the applicant?
And there were conditions about larger setbacks, more landscaping, screening wall, et cetera, on the zone change in 2006. Thank you.
Okay. It's time, Mr. Lewis, I'm sorry.
I just have one quick question. This is about the, the buffering between the so-called Costco building and Boone Road and I think it was mentioned earlier, there would be a six-foot wall, it looks like, based on the letter that was sent out to the Costco members, that there is some buffer and some vegetation or trees. Can I have an explanation of that?
So that's directly from a condition of approval from the comp plan zone change in 2007. They're required to provide a larger setback than what our current code requires for that zone and to provide the additional landscaping and screening.
And I don't, can you be more specific? I mean, is it, is it vegetation that will eventually grow taller than the wall or is it going to grow along the wall or is the wall always going to be what people look at?
I'm not sure what the landscape plan calls for in this case. In general, we have a minimum number of plant units required per square foot within that area. There's a combination of ground cover, shrubs and trees, so my guess is along that entire buffer, you'll see a combination of landscaping, some at ground level, some shrubs and some trees that will grow tall.
Counselor Nate?
Just to add on to that, because I was sitting here when we went through that and there was, because that was going to be the backside of all the buildings, people were concerned about the visual for dumpsters and other items out behind the buildings and so it was a visual screen, so they wouldn't be looking out at dumpsters.
Following along on Counsel Lewis's question, it was a six-foot sort of stone wall or a berm, but it didn't say anywhere how high the berm was. Does berm have to be six feet? Or I didn't see where it had a height for the berm.
I don't see a height limit from the berm right off.
I don't believe there was a height for the berm and I think they're proposing to do the wall.
Are there any further questions for staff?
If you've got an issue between a six-foot wall and a two-foot berm that goes to the building base, there's an issue there. It should be at least as high as the wall or what, why, why give them a choice?
I'm, I'm just saying, I don't think the condition specifies and they're not proposing a berm, so we didn't look at that because they're proposing the wall and it says six-foot wall, so we consider that to meet the condition.
So there is no berm?
There's no berm, is there?
The condition, condition.
Yeah, go ahead.
It reads that the applicant developer may provide a landscape berm within the setback in lieu of a wall.
Right, but they're not, so we didn't have to consider the height.
Thank you, Aaron. Rebuttal, five minutes.
We don't have five minutes before the meeting is done.
I need, I need about 20 minutes.
I move we extend the meeting for 20, till 10:20.
Second.
Second, by Anderson, all those who say aye.
Aye.
Proposed?
No.
Motion passed.
Okay.
So Wendy Killington, before we close our piece, I need to huddle with my folks a little bit if I can have a few moments, maybe a short break?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, just.
We're going to take a five-minute recess, which doesn't count against.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll come back to order. And we have a five-minute rebuttal from the applicant.
Wendy Killington again for PAC Trust. What we've decided to do is let the decision from 2007 speak to you rather than maybe me speaking to you. On page 29, it says that the city analyzed all allowable uses, they were all properly considered and analyzed for purposes of deciding traffic. On page 39, there's a clear statement that with the PAC Trust development, as explained in the TIA, Kubler Boulevard is able to accommodate the traffic from the proposed use, a shopping center that is 299,000 square feet. And in fact, under the proposal, the area transportation system, including Kubler Boulevard, will function better than it currently does under the proposal. And then on page 45 and 46, the design of streets under the proposal will maintain livability and the character of the area by improving transportation circulation so the traffic, transportation system functions. And the area currently does not have safe and adequate pedestrian bicycle facilities. The proposal will significantly improve the affected area streets to city standards and such facilities will be supplied under the proposal. On page 24, the traffic impact statement that established that a shopping center of 299,000 square feet was accurate and complete and that at present, the system currently fails. Therefore, the proposal and its required mitigation efforts will improve the transportation system, adequately mitigating its own impacts to enable and establish GOAT 12 and TPR compliance. With regard to promises made, have been promises kept, at least on our end of things. The decision speaks to us again and it says on page 11 that the distinction between a community shopping center and a regional one was decided by the council to be a numeric one and numeric only. Talking about city resolution I spoke about makes clear that if a development does not fit these criteria, which is 300,000 square feet or larger, it must be a community or neighborhood facility, must be. The proposal, 299, does not fit the characteristics outlined in that resolution for a regional facility. Therefore, this is further evidence that the proposal is for a community-level facility, just like your planning director told you. There were no representations made that there would not be a Costco here. As a matter of fact, in one of the seven meetings that PAC Trust conducted with the Cigna Neighborhood Association, which wholeheartedly supported the shopping center, there was a list of stores that was provided in response to a question, what stores might be there? And PAC Trust said Costco and some others. PAC Trust has been completely transparent. It has opened its pocketbook, it has spent 3.7... It has spent $3.7 million in reliance on that decision from the city council, and people want to take it away. It's on the hook to spend $6.3 million on a 299,000-square-foot shopping center, which this room mostly would like them to just give away. Well, they can't do that. And if there's been a bait and switch, I'll bet you know what we think's happened, because we kind of feel like the victims of a bait and switch. Something small is not what the city council approved. The city council approved a shopping center 299,000 square feet. That is not small. And that is what the Planning Commission recommended be approved, and that is what the city council approved in 2007. Trees, there is no way to save the trees. I forgot the name of the lady who said if you pave over their roots, they die. Well, guess what? All of the options, including the ones the PAC Trust presented to you in its application, either put a shopping center on top of where the trees are or where the parking lot is. It is impossible, and there isn't anybody here who can write a denial decision on the basis that it is not necessary to remove those trees and make it stick. Because the fact is, to do a 299,000-square-foot shopping center, or even a 227,000-square-foot shopping center, the trees have to be removed. And who do you know? Who do you know who plans 54 in place of the eight, the 16, no, the eight that are being removed that are two-inch caliper? Nobody does that. The fact is, the TIA that was done here probably wasn't required, because you're bogey, if you read your code, says if you're going to create more than, I thought it was 200 new trips, but maybe it's 1,000. Well, if you've got an approved shopping center site where they've already vetted and approved a whole bunch more trips than we're actually going to create, what was approved in 2007 had more trips than what we have here. If you've got that going on, you don't think you need to do it again. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, public hearing is closed. Counselor McCoyd?
I move that the city council not affirm the October 23, 2018, planning administrator's decision.
Second. This is a tough one for me. I've been business my whole life, but I've also represent Ward Four. I've walked those streets, so I'm pretty familiar with where this is being built and why it's being built. And I don't think, I'm just, I'm going to go back to, I know what the record says, I know what a regional store is, and that's a regional store. It doesn't belong in a neighborhood like that. So I'm going to vote for my motion.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I will support the motion too, and I have.
Microphone.
Pardon?
Use your mic.
Thank you. I will support the motion too, and I have three reasons that I look at. First one is the trees, and I disagree with is it necessary? I don't, the burden of this, the proof of this is on the applicant, and I don't feel they've met the burden to show that it's necessary to remove the trees to have this development. Second one is wholesale versus retail. I look at the, I read the definition to Mr. Panko, and in my view, my interpretation of that differs from the staff. I think it is, it is a wholesale, because it is not open to the general public. And sort of as a two-way is the gas station versus the fueling station. I think those are different things. And three is the traffic studies. The applicant has the burden here, and we were told they did it out of the goodness of their heart, and now we hear from the staff that they were required to do that. They, I just don't think they've met their burden, and we've got an opposing traffic report from Greenleaf or Greenlight, I'm not sure what name it is in the record, so those are the reasons why I'm opposing.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not be supporting the motion, having sat here during that time period. We did create a numerical threshold between regional and local. From a tree perspective, in regards to the previous comment, knowing industrial actually doesn't have that restriction, commercial doesn't define what necessary is, at least in my opinion, because commercial can vary in size immensely. You can have small commercial, you can have larger commercial that is really the same as industrial, and hence, we didn't put a definition inside of the codes for that. And then traffic, essentially from the traffic engineer, the study that they provided actually says there's more trips than the engineering manual. So I don't see any discrepancy with that whatsoever. I do recognize the fact that no matter what would go here is going to create a ton of traffic, and it's not going to be a nice, or as nice of an environment on the streets near your house. But again, we have large blocks of land along a major freeway intersection, and there's going to be something big there. If it's, if it's not Costco, it's going to be somebody else up to 299,000 square feet, and I don't see that there's going to be a large difference between this development and the next one, if this one is turned down, unless it goes to Luba, and comes back to us.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I can't support the motion on the floor. I remember clearly in 2007, as the vice president of the Planning Commission, when the zone change request came through, it was a bitter fight. The biggest difference tonight is, there's more people living out there. We, in my opinion, my recollection was, the compromise was, we're not going to say which stores can and can't be in this site, but we are going to limit, clearly limit the size, as a way of protecting the future population of that area, but as well as serving the future population of that area. And I think former Mayor Peterson said it best, if we can't, if people who deal with this city can't rely on the decisions, not the rhetoric before the decisions, but the actual decisions, if they can't rely on the decisions, then we're in chaos. And I just, I, this decision, this motion does that, and I can't support it.
Yeah, I served on that council as well, and also on the Planning Commission. I think I'm the only person here who's ever voted against this thing as a planning matter. But when it goes through that process, I think Mayor Peterson's correct. You do create an expectation. You create a promise to these people or to anyone else, including the folks on the others, on all sides of this issue. And I think the ability to be wildly inconsistent is one of the things this council better think about. And to begin to go back on promises made, on agreements with whomever it is, or just your basic land use decisions, you're going to lose this, I think, in court anyway. I think the proponents win, no matter what. I think there's, a deal's a deal, and that's what happened here. I'm just really concerned about this. I mean, this isn't something I thought was a fabulous idea to rezone that land. Overall, I didn't like it. And, but, once you go down this road, I'm really worried that you make these U-turns, and you're going to find yourselves in constant legal trouble. You're going to be creating expectations. I mean, I listened to this discussion tonight, and I let you know how I felt about it during the discussion on traffic. I mean, this is, suddenly we're moved by traffic on Kubler, but I can't get anyone to care about commercial, or Liberty, or Marion, or Center, or on the bridge, or Wallace. All of a sudden, that's just perception, is what I'm told by members. And I'm really concerned about this. At some point, somebody better stop for a minute and kind of get themselves centered on what's real here. And this is a really, this is a bad decision, and I think it's unfortunate if it's made. It's the kind of thing that goes out into the community, and I think makes people really question, kind of what's going on down here? I really am concerned about it. Now, you know, the bottom line is, I wouldn't have voted for this as a land use matter, didn't vote for it as a land use matter. But, boy, I don't know how, 12 years later, I get to reverse, and suddenly I win. It's just silly. So I, I'm sorry, Counselor McCoyd, I really fundamentally disagree with you on this one.
Point of order, we need to act like a motion to extend, or we're going to expire?
I think it's time to vote. Okay? All those in, okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Okay. Nay, Lewis, Bennett, and Nanki. Motion passes.
We still have a first reading?
Got a first reading.
Yeah, I, Mr. Mayor, I move a 10-minute extension.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we've got a first reading, you said? What do we got here?
Okay, ordinance, ordinance bill number 2318, an ordinance relating to the Salem Urban Development, Community Service, and Housing Commission repealing SRC Chapter 20G.
We're not done yet, so if you want to go outside, go outside, you're more than welcome. Okay? Or be quiet. Pick your poison. Okay, go ahead.
Ordinance Bill number 2318, an ordinance relating to the Salem Urban Development, Community Services, Service, and Housing Commission repealing SRC Chapter 20G.
I move the staff recommendation.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Got a leading question?
Motion passes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one person who's waited the whole meeting for public comment.
Where are they?
Get down.
Come on.
My name's Catherine Daniels, I live at 1662 Cottage Street, Southeast. I know it's been a long evening, I'll make this short, but I want to switch gears. I understand that you, that the new librarian has recently spoken to you, and I want to say that I'm one of a number of people who has concerns about the library's current efforts to purge a whopping one-third of its collection. I fully understand the need to keep the collection current, but fear that this will be at the cost of older classics with significant literary and historic significance. Already, our library lacks many such works that a community of our size and stature should have. I'm not talking thousands of books, I'm talking a couple hundred books, that there's plenty of room for on our shelves in our library. I take issue with the library's mission to serve, quote, "the general public." If that, if by that it is maintaining the more popular and current works to the neglect of classic fiction and nonfiction. Why should our library not serve a broad range of readers? There's considerable historic significance in a lot of older literature. To eliminate public access to these books is really to rewrite history, and is not much better than book burning, in my view. I object to the library's assumption that the value of books to the public is reflected primarily in the frequency with which they're checked out. The library is using a standard of one to three years, but in actuality, the professional industrial standard is three to five years, which is in the library's own documents it provided to me. So I don't understand why we're using a one-to-three-year standard when the standard is actually three to five years in the library industry. Over time, many of the classics have been checked out far more often than recently acquired books. You have to look at the long term here. That is really the true measure of staying power and worth. In addition, people sometimes use books for reference in the library without checking them out. I've read through the library's criteria for discarding books, and along with other people, still want more detail in how these decisions are made. Far from continuing to discard classic literature, which has actually been an ongoing process for some years, I'd like to see the library institute a plan to acquire currently lacking important older books. I ask you to please pause this purge as it applies to older literature until more public input can be sought and greater accommodation can be made to both protect and acquire important older literary works. I'd be happy to help in any way, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Have you had a chance to go to the library board yet and talk with them?
I have not. I'm planning to go on the ninth, the advisory committee, advisory board, but I know that this process is, has already started.
Yeah, but I really would recommend you go to the library board, talk with them, and then kind of we could, maybe we can have a richer conversation. They really are the folks that are.
I hope not too much damage is done between now and then.
Yeah. Great, thank you very much. We're adjourned.